...who were interested in creating blankets for rhinos. So she would go to the library and she would help students. So then she asked if there were any teachers that would like to help. And I thought, this is the perfect opportunity, let me try to help too.
I love learning about rhinos and how we get to be able to help them and how they really need help and how they can just die from depression. I want rhinos to be able to experience how life is and that they not be hunted all the time.
So we've been able to continue a club that we feel has been able to expose students to real world issues. And we've had success with a lot of students signing up and willing to spend an hour a week after school for our knitting club. So they actually learn how to knit a 5x5 inch square that would be assembled into one blanket that we are planning to donate to a rhino orphanage.
I am very grateful to work with Ms. Pang and Ms. Rojas for bringing the Rhino Club to our campus. This is truly a great opportunity for our students to become aware of their surroundings, but to really understand what it means to be a global citizen, to understand that their actions have an impact and that they can make a difference in the world.
On today's Bridging Futures, we feature Cussera Middle School's Career Day.
Morning, welcome to Career Day. How important it is, Career Day here at Cussera Middle School. Every day, we inspire our kids. They want to see role models. They want to know what is their career pathway going to be like. So this is of great importance.
This is important because the students will start to, you know, realize that there's different career options. They could start to think about their future plans.
They might just like find new career options that they didn't even know existed.
What a wonderful opportunity for our students to learn about the daily lives, the careers of so many different professionals that serve our community. Any opportunity like this, I think, is a wonderful learning experience for our students and how they can tie in their education into a professional career someday.
And we're really happy as the parents, like having all these professionals speaking to our kids because they provide a lot of information and they make our kids important. And I'm really happy to be here and help.
It is so awesome to have all of you here today. A special shout out to the new principal, Dominguez, thank you so much. This has been a wonderful welcome to Cussera and it's great to see all of our community members come out today to help support our students in the Career Day. This is an annual event that Cussera has done for many, many years in relationship with Senator Caslava.
And you'll see he'll have a badge, alright? Maybe he'll have a uniform. Maybe he'll have a tool belt, like my tool belt. You guys see my tool belt?
Yeah.
Okay? We are here to help you.
What we do in Rhino Club, we knit for baby rhinos because they are in need of comfort and they lost them up.
Today on Bridging Futures, Trap Elementary Schools Blankets for Baby Rhinos.
I've had a lot of support starting the Rhino Club. We're hoping to instill the values into the students so they can have compassion.
She's an animal rights activist and she had students who were interested in creating blankets for rhinos. So she would go to the library and she would help students. So then she asked if there were any teachers that would like to help. And I thought, this is the perfect opportunity, let me try to help too.
I love learning about rhinos and how we get to be able to help them and how they really need help and how they can just die from depression. I want rhinos to be able to experience how life is and that they not be hunted all the time.
So we've been able to continue a club that we feel has been able to expose students to real world issues. And we've had success with a lot of students signing up and willing to spend an hour a week after school for our knitting club. So they actually learn how to knit a 5x5 inch square that would be assembled into one blanket that we are planning to donate to a rhino orphanage.
I am very grateful to work with Ms. Pang and Ms. Rojas for bringing the Rhino Club to our campus. This is truly a great opportunity for our students to become aware of their surroundings, but to really understand what it means to be a global citizen, to understand that their actions have an impact and that they can make a difference in the world.
On today's Bridging Futures, we feature Cussera Middle School's Career Day.
Morning, welcome to Career Day. How important it is, Career Day here at Cussera Middle School. Every day, we inspire our kids. They want to see role models. They want to know what is their career pathway going to be like. So this is of great importance.
This is important because the students will start to, you know, realize that there's different career options. They could start to think about their future plans.
They might just like find new career options that they didn't even know existed.
What a wonderful opportunity for our students to learn about the daily lives, the careers of so many different professionals that serve our community. Any opportunity like this, I think, is a wonderful learning experience for our students and how they can tie in their education into a professional career someday.
And we're really happy as the parents, like having all these professionals speaking to our kids because they provide a lot of information and they make our kids important. And I'm really happy to be here and help.
It is so awesome to have all of you here today. A special shout out to the new principal, Dominguez, thank you so much. This has been a wonderful welcome to Cussera and it's great to see all of our community members come out today to help support our students in the Career Day. This is an annual event that Cussera has done for many, many years in relationship with Senator Caslava.
And you'll see he'll have a badge, alright? Maybe he'll have a uniform. Maybe he'll have a tool belt, like my tool belt. You guys see my tool belt?
Yeah.
Okay? We are here to help you.
What we do in Rhino Club, we knit for baby rhinos because they are in need of comfort and they lost them up.
Today on Bridging Futures, Trap Elementary Schools Blankets for Baby Rhinos.
I've had a lot of support starting the Rhino Club. We're hoping to instill the values into the students so they can have compassion.
She's an animal rights activist and she had students who were interested in creating blankets for rhinos. So she would go to the library and she would help students. So then she asked if there were any teachers that would like to help. And I thought, this is the perfect opportunity, let me try to help too.
I love learning about rhinos and how we get to be able to help them and how they really need help and how they can just die from depression. I want rhinos to be able to experience how life is and that they not be hunted all the time.
So we've been able to continue a club that we feel has been able to expose students to real world issues. And we've had success with a lot of students signing up and willing to spend an hour a week after school for our knitting club. So they actually learn how to knit a 5x5 inch square that would be assembled into one blanket that we are planning to donate to a rhino orphanage.
I am very grateful to work with Ms. Pang and Ms. Rojas for bringing the Rhino Club to our campus. This is truly a great opportunity for our students to become aware of their surroundings, but to really understand what it means to be a global citizen, to understand that their actions have an impact and that they can make a difference in the world.
On today's Bridging Futures, we feature Cussera Middle School's Career Day.
Morning, welcome to Career Day. How important it is, Career Day here at Cussera Middle School. Every day, we inspire our kids. They want to see role models. They want to know what is their career pathway going to be like. So this is of great importance.
This is important because the students will start to, you know, realize that there's different career options. They could start to think about their future plans.
They might just like find new career options that they didn't even know existed.
What a wonderful opportunity for our students to learn about the daily lives, the careers of so many different professionals that serve our community. Any opportunity like this, I think, is a wonderful learning experience for our students and how they can tie in their education into a professional career someday.
And we're really happy as the parents, like having all these professionals speaking to our kids because they provide a lot of information and they make our kids important. And I'm really happy to be here and help.
It is so awesome to have all of you here today. A special shout out to the new principal, Dominguez, thank you so much. This has been a wonderful welcome to Cussera and it's great to see all of our community members come out today to help support our students in the Career Day. This is an annual event that Cussera has done for many, many years in relationship with Senator Caslava.
And you'll see he'll have a badge, alright? Maybe he'll have a uniform. Maybe he'll have a tool belt, like my tool belt. You guys see my tool belt?
Yeah.
Okay? We are here to help you.
What we do in Rhino Club, we knit for baby rhinos because they are in need of comfort and they lost them up.
Today on Bridging Futures, Trap Elementary Schools Blankets for Baby Rhinos.
I've had a lot of support starting the Rhino Club. We're hoping to instill the values into the students so they can have compassion.
She's an animal rights activist and she had students who were interested in creating blankets for rhinos. So she would go to the library and she would help students. So then she asked if there were any teachers that would like to help. And I thought, this is the perfect opportunity, let me try to help too.
I love learning about rhinos and how we get to be able to help them and how they really need help and how they can just die from depression. I want rhinos to be able to experience how life is and that they not be hunted all the time.
So we've been able to continue a club that we feel has been able to expose students to real world issues. And we've had success with a lot of students signing up and willing to spend an hour a week after school for our knitting club. So they actually learn how to knit a 5x5 inch square that would be assembled into one blanket that we are planning to donate to a rhino orphanage.
I am very grateful to work with Ms. Pang and Ms. Rojas for bringing the Rhino Club to our campus. This is truly a great opportunity for our students to become aware of their surroundings, but to really understand what it means to be a global citizen, to understand that their actions have an impact and that they can make a difference in the world.
On today's Bridging Futures, we feature Cussera Middle School's Career Day.
Morning, welcome to Career Day. How important it is, Career Day here at Cussera Middle School. Every day, we inspire our kids. They want to see role models. They want to know what is their career pathway going to be like. So this is of great importance.
This is important because the students will start to, you know, realize that there's different career options. They could start to think about their future plans.
They might just like find new career options that they didn't even know existed.
What a wonderful opportunity for our students to learn about the daily lives, the careers of so many different professionals that serve our community. Any opportunity like this, I think, is a wonderful learning experience for our students and how they can tie in their education into a professional career someday.
And we're really happy as the parents, like having all these professionals speaking to our kids because they provide a lot of information and they make our kids important. And I'm really happy to be here and help.
It is so awesome to have all of you here today. A special shout out to the new principal, Dominguez, thank you so much. This has been a wonderful welcome to Cussera and it's great to see all of our community members come out today to help support our students in the Career Day. This is an annual event that Cussera has done for many, many years in relationship with Senator Caslava.
And you'll see he'll have a badge, alright? Maybe he'll have a uniform. Maybe he'll have a tool belt, like my tool belt. You guys see my tool belt?
Yeah.
Okay? We are here to help you.
What we do in Rhino Club, we knit for baby rhinos because they are in need of comfort and they lost them up.
Today on Bridging Futures, Trap Elementary Schools Blankets for Baby Rhinos.
Uh, it's T. Rose. Cause I did sign. Oh, women, it's up here. Where's the signature folder? Okay. I just need one copy of that.
Are you talking about the one from the rear? I love learning about rhinos and how we get to be able to help them and how they really need help and how they can just die from depression. I want rhinos to be able to experience how life is and that they not be hunted all the time.
So we've been able to continue a club that we feel has been able to expose students to real world issues. And we've had success with a lot of students signing up.
Okay, I do apologize, I tried to start on time. We had attorneys and I wanted to stop the clock on their dollar amount. I didn't want to hold them for another two hours. So, thank you for this seven minutes grace. Okay. It has been an interesting evening, you'll see as we go along. Okay, can I have a motion and a second for adjournment of closed session, please?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the time is 7:07. And we are reconvening the open session. Tonight, we have a fun presentation by Morris Elementary School. But first, let's have students Leilani Harris, Eduardo Agüino, and Valerie Sanchez lead us in the pledge in English and Spanish.
Morning, welcome to Career Day. How important it is, Career Day here at Cussera Middle School. Every day, we inspire our kids. They want to see role models.
No, I'm not saying anything.
We are heart ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just for...
I wish I had your voice tonight. Okay, please. Okay, now our second grade dual language immersion students from Ms. Solizano's class in step with Dia de los Muertos theme will be singing 1 E2 de Noviembre. Excuse my voice.
And you'll see he'll have a badge, alright? Maybe he'll have a uniform. Maybe he'll have a tool belt, like my tool belt. You guys see my tool belt?
Yeah.
Okay? We are here to help you.
What we do in Rhino Club...
Uno y dos de noviembre. En México, en México, se celebra el día de los muertos.
Today on Bridging Futures, Trap Elementary Schools Blankets for Baby Rhinos.
On today's Bridging Futures, we feature Cussera Middle School's Career Day.
We want to thank our teacher principal, Mrs. Braggs.
Can we take a picture with them before they go?
Absolutely.
Hi! Excuse me? You all can get the students a little bit closer together. A little bit closer together. There you go. Get a little bit closer. We're missing, okay, there we go. One, two, three. One more. Look over here real quick. Look at me first, then look at your mommies, okay? One, two, three. One second mommy. Okay. One, two, three, and one more.
Thank you guys, thank you all.
Thank you, awesome job!
We want to thank our teacher principal, Mrs. Braggs, assistant principal, Mrs. Van Bell, and the parents guardians here tonight. Go Mountain Lions! Don't forget it. Thank you, great idea. Okay, report out of closed session. Dr. McDuffie, you have something to report?
Uh, yes we do. The Board of Education accepted the resignation of certificated employee 1056718 effective December 1st, 2018. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Yi Ping Chen, accountant, nutrition services. The roll call vote was also unanimous. And the Board of Education accepted the voluntary retirement of certificated employee 1603128 effective June 30th, 2019. The roll call vote was unanimous. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McDuffie. Okay, before I read out a couple of changes, can I have a motion and a second from the board, please?
A move to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Okay, and let's have that as a move to adopt the agenda as amended.
As amended.
Okay, and can I get a second on that?
Second.
I'm sorry, what were those amendments?
Okay, I'm gonna read them right now. Okay, um, out of, just so you'll know why we were late, out of closed session, it was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation per government code 54956.9 subdivision A, Rialto Unified School District versus Education Consulting Services. Case number CIVDS 1518116. And then the adoption of the agenda, amendment I should say, is the board would like to report that the following items on section reference J2.1, reference J2.1 of the open agenda will be modified as follows. Change of start date from promotions for Elizabeth Sandoval to secretary one, Cussera Middle School, to November 26th of 2018. From that date to promotions, Elizabeth Sandoval, secretary one, Cussera Middle School, to November 15th tomorrow, 2018. So it changes start date. Then removed from the agenda would be employment, Aubrey Miller, nutrition service worker one, nutrition services, effective tomorrow, 11:15, 2018. With those amendments, board, we are ready to vote to adopt the agenda. Questions, comments? Okay. Vote by board members to adopt the agenda. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And tonight, our student board member called in sick and hope she's doing better. It's always better when our students are represented here by some of their peers instead of this old guy. And friends, my peers. Okay, even though we love them and... Okay, even though we love them and we do our best for them. Okay, presentations. Uh, Middle School District Student Advisory Committee, uh, without the student board member, Clerk O'Kelly, has agreed to read, um, the roster.
Okay, first we have from Colb Middle School, Rachel Montanez and Taylor Roten.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. We are so excited to be here and tell you what we've been up to at Colb for the past month. I am Rachel Montanez, the ASB 7th Grade Vice President, and this is Taylor Roten, our ASB President of our mighty Cougars. We continue celebrating our students and building our school community. The day after our last board presentation was our first annual Fall Vapinight, and our NPR was jam-packed with family and students showing off their musical and artistic talents. This past Saturday, Colb's robotics team took first place overall at the first LEGO League Robotics Competition hosted by Rialto Middle. We are headed to Legoland next month to compete against 54 other teams from around Southern California, including three others from Rialto Unified. We are extremely grateful to Dr. De Souza and the district for their ongoing support. You are appreciated. Colb student leaders have also had the good fortune of participating in two nutrition services sponsored activities in the past week. Last Friday, two of our officers attended the Nutrition Service Convention in Long Beach, where they tried amazing new food options for our school district, participated in team-building activities with students from other districts, and learned about healthy breakfast choices we begin our days strong and ready to learn. Then today, we toured the district nutrition facility center to learn more about the workings of how we successfully feed all students breakfast and lunch every day all year long. Did you know that 90% of our students eat a school lunch? It's a giant task that runs seamlessly. As we prepare for our fall break, we also remind ourselves of what it is to be grateful and kind to others. Colb 7th graders were selected to participate in the filming of the district's anti-bullying initiative that has already launched in the elementary schools. And our 6th graders will also be presented by a program by Kaiser Education that focused on the same message. We're working to implement more programs, such as our Web Leader Program, and working with other communities to help our students learn to express themselves appropriately and safely. We look forward to closing out this semester with many service projects, including our annual canned food drive, Toys for Tots participation, and something to assist the students and families recently affected by the fires in Southern California. Remember, Cougars, always loud and proud. Hashtag Colb Cougars Family.
Go Cougars, well done. Ms. O'Kelly.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have J Hugh Middle School with Tanya Barajas.
Welcome.
Good evening, President Martinez, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. I am Tanya Barajas, member of J Hugh Middle School, member of J Hugh Middle Schools ASB. October is always a busy month here for the Jaguars, and leads into a very thankful November. So, would you like to hear about our homeroom wars competition first? Or would you like to hear about our success in the Run Around the Rocks competition? Oh no, I must begin with letting you know about the fabulous, fabulous Red Ribbon Week play our drama club put on led by Mrs. Robinson. But, then again, there was this spectacular haunted house that Miss Prado and the music club had that was frightastic. With so many options, I will start at the beginning. We started October with a fierce competition amongst our homeroom wars, with our first-ever homeroom wars. We had rooms dressed as Marvel, DC characters, camo, and sports to make our first competition wonderful. This was followed by having 70 students participating in the second annual Run Around the Rocks competition, where we had several students place in first, second, and third places. The students were trained by Mr. Koshawagi, and his presence was felt by the students supporting. Hashtag Team Koshawagi headbands. Way to go, runners! Our drama club led by Mrs. Robinson put an awesome Red Ribbon Week presentation for their fellow Jaguars on Monday, October 22nd. Red Ribbon Week was a success, not only for Drama Club, but ASB as well. We were busy planning and coming up with plans to make it the best Red Ribbon Week yet. We had a week's worth of Spirit Days planned that a majority of staff and students participated in. In the midst of all, there was a haunted house run by J Hugh's very own music club, led by Miss Prado, on Friday, October 26th. The annual Halloween dance was the 30th for all our ghosts and goblins to dance the day away. And, yes, more, we held our annual door decorating contest that was judged on October 31st. We had such a great level of participation that we had to do winners by building. On Friday, November 2nd, our 8th graders participated in the Knowledge Bowl, and our first-ever Fall Festival was held from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the PE areas and the field. Several of our clubs had booths with games and were selling foods. It was a great time. Next year, stop by and check it out. After that, we held our Honor Roll Assembly and celebrated the hard work of all our Jaguar scholars. And then, nope, not done yet. We had the annual College and Career Day on the 8th, led by fabulous Mr. Ed. The annual canned drive held by ASB for the holidays is curling underway. Our PBIS team is gearing up for our TFI at the end of this month and are hoping for a 5-2-1 on all positive things that we are doing here at J Hugh. This is Tanya Barajas signing off for tonight. I hope you have a restful and fun-filled holiday, and I look forward to filling you more on what's happening in J Hugh in the new year.
Well done. Go Jaguars! Clerk O'Kelly?
Thank you, Tanya. Uh, next, we have Casera Middle School, represented by David Louviano.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. My name is David Louviano, ASB President at Casera Middle School. I'm happy to say that our ASB has been kept due this quarter. We had our Career Day in October welcoming Senator Connie Leva and having many guest speakers talk to her, about, talk to our students about their careers, giving our students an outlook at the different career paths they may choose. We also ended October with our Glow Dance, having many students attend, and we had a great time. We started November with the Honor Roll Assembly awarding those who got good grades in the first quarter. Last Friday, our ASB treasurer Zarqa Ali, ASB Vice President Carmen Reyes, and ASB advisor Ms. Diaz and I attended the CNAC Conference in Long Beach. It was very educational, and it was fun to try all the different foods. Tomorrow, our school will have a BMX show for those who participated in our ASB fundraiser. Before we leave for fall break, ASB will also be hosting the Breakfast of Champions for those students and their parents who were selected by the teachers for displaying the character trait caring. And of course, ASB is always working on our school bulletin boards, further improving the look of our school. Thank you and have a great night, everyone.
Well done.
Thank you, David. Okay, and now from Frisbee Middle School, we have Gabriela Gomez.
Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the Cabinet, parents, guardians, and community members. My name is Gabriela Gomez, and I am a student representative from Frisbee Middle School. This month has been dedicated to our kindness campaign that we promoted during Red Ribbon Week in October. We will also launch our season of service when we return from Thanksgiving break. We have a few holiday Spirit Days plans, as well as our first PBIS pizza and holiday movie party. We are currently shopping around for a great holiday movie to show. Our academic scholars in Avid attended a trip to Fiesta Village last Friday. Students who were awarded this trip had all As or Bs during first quarter in the school year. Way to go for our Avid scholars. We have our school-wide Knott's Berry Farm field trip coming up during Thanksgiving break, as well as our student leaders attending the Disneyland Youth Education Series Leadership Development Day when we return from Thanksgiving break. We will learn team-building skills, as well as putting our minds to think outside the box, just the way Mr. Walt Disney did. Lastly, we are currently in the works of launching our Believe, Achieve, and Succeed campaign and hosting a Career and College Fair when we return from Christmas break. We have tons of ideas, and we hope that this will boost up our school morale and the spirit of going to college. We wish you all to hear to have a safe and happy Thanksgiving break.
Thank you, Gabriela.
Well done. Go Falcons!
And now from Rialto Middle School, we have Caitlin Fujiwara and Tatiana Vargas.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, members of the Cabinet, and our viewing audience. My name is Tatiana Vargas, and I am the proud 8th Grade Vice President of Rialto Middle School.
And I'm Caitlin Fujiwara, ASB Secretary.
On October 30th, we held our Dia de los Tigres Carnival over, where over 400 students and family members enjoyed a carnival atmosphere with obstacle course, games, and of course, food trucks. It was a great evening. Our running club competed in Run Around the Rocks 5K and have since entered the Turkey Trot in Riverside this coming week as their second race. Way to represent Tigers. Our robotics team hosted the fifth annual first LEGO League qualifying tournament. Although we did not place first, place on the podium, four of the Rialto Unified teams did and are advancing to Legoland in December. A great showing for our campus and district. A hundred of our students attended the Stempa Palooza at Valley College, where we heard keynote speakers, as well as hands-on presentation from many programs and companies. It was shocking. No, really, they had a static electricity generator that let us shock our friends.
Last week, we had a touring Extreme Pogo Stick team perform for our fundraising students. We even convinced them to jump over Mr. Campbell. We're still being punished for that one, but it was worth it. Our college kickoff tailgate party was a huge success. We learned about college requirements and what we need to do now. We also had a fantastic tailgate party put on by Nutrition Services. Good food, again, our parties always have good food. Our boys and girls basketball team are forming, and we look forward to a winning season from both. I want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, as we will not be back until January. Enjoy your time with family and friends, and of course, as we say in ASB, every event needs good food. Enjoy.
Well done.
Thank you Caitlin and Tatiana.
Okay, next, um, I have to go up to the other podium. When we sit here as board members, or Board of Education, we make some of the toughest decisions on what's in the best interest of our students. However, from time to time, we are also allowed the privilege of honoring the best educators that this district has employed. Of which, Rialto High School classroom teacher, Mr. Mikal Thompson, you are one. Please join me at the podium.
Born in Bangkok, Thailand, to a Vietnamese mother, Ba, and a military father, Hugh Thompson, who was then stationed in Vietnam. As a military family, Mikal and his two older sisters moved a lot. They were raised in Thailand, Maryland, Japan, Virginia, Belgium, and Washington State. He graduated from Central Valley High School in 1993 and moved to Southern California to attend the University of Redlands. In 1997, Mr. Thompson graduated with double bachelor's degrees, one in business administration, the other in economics. In the summer of 2004, Mr. Thompson entered the credential program at the University of Redlands. In August of 2004, he was hired as an intern teacher at Rialto High School, teaching integrated science. At that time, UC Riverside approached Mr. Thompson to teach Mesa for Rialto High School. Due to juggling his full calendar, marriage, a newborn child, and finishing up his credential, he had to decline. In his second year of teaching, Mr. Thompson decided to take up the role of a Mesa teacher at Rialto High School. And then, through dedication and excellence, a multitude of student-centered recognitions followed. Whether it was four students or 20 students, Rialto High School dominated at the UCR Regional Mesa Competitions. Mr. Thompson's Mesa students simply outshined them all. Observing how much his students were learning, and also enjoying the healthy robotics competitions, Mr. Thompson entered his enthusiastic students in additional competitions. He added VEX robotics competitions, solar boat competitions, marble roller coaster competitions, sea perch underwater remote-operated vehicle competitions, Rube Goldberg competitions, and cybersecurity competitions. The program required an additional four relocatable classrooms. Rialto High School added Mesa World. Amazon recognized a robotics program with a $10,000 robotics donation. This year, he added esports and an energy conservation competition to the mix. Again, different students excelled in different years, but one ingredient remained consistent. That's you, Mr. Thompson. To share some Rialto High School Mesa distinctions, they were: First place, three years in a row, for the marble roller coaster competition, with the first year earning first, second, and third places. Second place for the solar boat competition. 2017 was the first time entering the Rube Goldberg competition. One of our groups earned second place and a special award presented by the Manufacturers Council of the Inland Empire, which included a $250 award. The team was also invited to attend the National Rube Goldberg Competition, where Rialto High School students became big brothers and sisters to Myers Elementary School students, who also represented the district at the Rube Goldberg Competition in Chicago, Illinois, in April of 2018. During three of the five years of participating in the regional sea perch competition, the Rialto High School team earned a spot at the Sea Perch National Competition, the first time Rialto High School Mesa traveled to the University of Massachusetts in Dartmouth for the national competition. In 2017, Rialto High School Mesa traveled to Georgia Tech for the national competition, where the Knights placed 12th out of 99 high school teams from around the country. In May of this year, the event became an international competition and was held again at the University of Massachusetts, Dartmouth. The team earned the second highest score for the Engineering Journal. In October, Mesa students presented their solar project, the California STEAM 2018 Conference. Also in October, Rialto High School senior Brenda Carrera was only San Bernardino County's school student to deliver a keynote speech at the STEPCon Conference in Riverside. About eight years ago, UC Riverside Mesa began recognizing outstanding Mesa programs by presenting their Mesa School of the Year Award for middle and high school. Rialto High School was the first school to earn the Mesa High School of the Year Award. Then, Rialto High School earned the award two more times. Under Principal Arnie Ayala's leadership, Mr. Thompson created the Mesa Academy as a four-year pathway for our students. Two years ago, Mr. Thompson wrote up a new class, Mesa Senior Seminar. This class is an A through G elective course that is approved by the Mesa California Office and is available for any Mesa program statewide. Last summer, he also wrote a third Mesa class, An Introduction to Computer Science. This class is also A through G approved and available statewide. This spring, he wrote a fourth Mesa class, Drafting and Design. It is also A through G approved. Even though the Mesa program has been around nationwide for over 40 years, Mesa Thompson, Mr. Thompson is the first teacher that has taken the initiative to create additional courses and expand the Mesa program. Mr. Thompson is married to his wife, Ruth. Is Ruth here? Would you like to join us? Okay. They have four children, two daughters. And which daughter is this? Hi, Emma. Oh, what a sweetie. Now, here we go. Okay, okay. His two daughters are in competitive gymnastics, and his sons take taekwondo classes. I better watch out for you. And your name? Mark? My pleasure. Okay, you should be very proud of your dad. You'll understand what this award is. You may already. Okay. Needless to say, this keeps a couple busy. The key to the district is given to less than... The Key to the District is given to less than 1% of the more than 3,200 employees that we have in this district. This honor is reserved for a person who is esteemed in his or her work, showing excellence in collaboration with our students and education community of Rialto. Mr. Thompson, through years of my having observed your work, you have demonstrated your real-world classroom training has benefited our students immensely. Rialto Unified School District is extremely proud of your accomplishments. You inspire and challenge your students in the classrooms and through healthy academic competition. You have not only motivated your students, but also put Rialto High School and this district on the map for Mesa Excellence. Congratulations, Mr. Thompson. You are the recipient of my 2018 Key to the District. Give us a few words.
All right. Mr. Martinez, thank you for this prestigious honor. It was a great pleasure. To be honest, I wasn't expecting it. I don't know why I'm expecting it. I know you listed a lot of things, had a very long presentation about all of my accomplishments. But I really can't take credit for all of that. I know I put in a lot of time doing all this stuff with Mesa, but I think all of this was really a matter of circumstance for me. Opportunities that were presented to me that I was able to take advantage of. The first one, obviously, being the Mesa Program. Carlos Gonzalez is our Director of the Mesa Program at UC Riverside. So through the Mesa Program, the curriculum that they offer, very open-ended, allowed us to take advantage of different opportunities. Our curriculum, they provided the curriculum for us, which was just a kind of a baseline of a program to build off of. And with that, the students were really driven. They're the ones that drove me to do more. Their enthusiasm, their excitement, all the competition opportunities that were presented to them gave them the opportunity to shine and they just made me look better. And of course, more recently, Mr. Ayala has had a huge part of our success. When he introduced the pathway programs at Rialto High School, that seemed to be when our program really just exploded. With five classes, six classes, 180 students we're dealing with on a daily basis, participating in the Mesa Program, going to competitions. It opened up a lot of opportunities for us. Mr. Almos is, has been our big supporter. He oversees the Mesa Program at Rialto High School. Anything I needed, I could just ask him for it and he'll, he'll take care of it for us. So at our school site as well, since we're bringing up people, I see a lot of our staff members here too. It is all of their support as well that makes this program successful. When my students are trying to get out of class, because they need extra time to work on their projects, the teachers are mostly cooperative. A little reluctant at times, but they know the importance of the program. They recognize the importance of the programs and how it is, how important it is for the students to participate and to succeed as well. And for them, I really thank them for their support of this program throughout the year. So you guys want to come in?
Bring them over, bring them over. Bring them over, bring them over.
But even more recently, I was trying to think of, you know, why this program has been successful. And when I attended the Strategic Planning Meeting at the beginning of September, Dr. Avila was giving a speech about his structure that he was giving for this district and how he's trying to make it more student-centered. And he came up with that circular model where the students were in the center and the administrators kind of rotated around it. And when I saw that, I really saw the Mesa Program in that. And it really highlights how successful that model is working for our district. More recently, this year even, you mentioned the eSports competition. Mr. Martina was, Mr. Martinez was the one that sent that down to me. I asked my students, "Hey, do you want to play video games for school?" "Sure." And then I was thinking, "How are we going to play games without computers?" Again, more circumstance, opportunity. Dr. Sweeney is our, our Assistant Principal that's in charge of technology at our school. Couple days after the email I got from her, "Hey, we've got all these desktops sitting around. Who needs some desktop computers?" "Hey, I do." "That's handy." And then more recently, Ms. Chan likes to send a lot of emails for competitions and different opportunities. My students love to jump on those. And the circular model really came into play during those because I could reach out to different parts of the organization, different parts of the district, and they could take care of things for us as quickly as I needed to. I didn't have to follow that pyramid scheme where I had to go through different steps. I could contact Dr. D'Souza, Ms. Chan, the Secretary, Ms. Bailey, and they can get things done really quickly for our students so that we can get things taken care of. A lot of those programs came up really short notice, but our district has been fantastic about getting things done. Our trip to Chicago for the Rube Goldberg Competition, we found out about that. We had about a week to plan everything out, get everything organized to make that trip happen. And our district was very supportive of making that happen. So I can't take all the credit for the success. It takes the parents' involvement, it takes the teachers, all the staff members there, and our entire district to make this program successful. So for all of you, I think, I thank you for this success. Thank you.
With the board like picture with Mr. Thompson.
Everyone involved, please come on up.
This is true. Sorry for pulling you away so much.
Okay, get Rube Posa and then, sure, why don't you go in there as well? I got it, I got your picture. I'll give it to you, I promise. There you go. Okay. One, two, three, and one more. Thank you, Emma. Keep smiling like that, keep smiling, don't move. Don't move, Emma. You got the perfect smile, Emma. One, two, three, smile. One more.
Okay, our next presentation is Local Control and Accountability Plan, Local Indicators for the California School Dashboard Presentation by Mr. John Roach, Lead Academic Technology Agent.
All right, well, good evening, President Martinez, members of the Board, Dr. McDuffie and other members of our innovation team as well as the audience. My name is John Roach, I'm the Lead Academic Technology Agent. And I really kind of wear two hats in the district. One, I work a lot with technology, information technology and education technology. And the other part of my job has to do with data and assessment as well as the California School Dashboard. So tonight is a requirement that we actually present to you, information related to the local indicators that will be available on the California School Dashboard when they do their fall update. It's currently scheduled for December 3rd. So quite a bit of information I'll be presenting to you. But I kind of will move somewhat quickly, so if you have questions at the end or need more information afterwards, please feel free to reach out through Dr. McDuffie so I can get you those answers. All right, so just some important terms before I start. As we start talking about the California School Dashboard, they like to use certain acronyms. So you can see there, we have LCFF, which is the Local Control Funding Formula. We have our LCAP, which is the Local Control Accountability Plan. And they refer to everything as LEA, which is the Local Education Agency, which basically means the district. So the local indicators are in addition to what is established by the state. So I'm going to go over those in just a moment, but the idea to take from this slide is that there are local indicators that we have to determine, have we met, not met, or not met for two years. They're only reported at the district level. So if you were to be on the California School Dashboard and look at an individual school, you actually won't see any of the local indicators. To meet the requirement of met for the local indicators, basically the district has to identify, how is it evaluating its progress in certain priorities? And then report it to the school board in a regularly scheduled meeting. It's not an item for approval, it's just meant to be a presentation so you have the information. Last year, you probably remember, the deadline was December 1st. They've moved it forward to November 16th to make sure that they can try to schedule the release of that Fall California School Dashboard, which will be going through some changes. So as we get to that point, I'll be sharing that information with you as well. So on the left are the state indicators. Those are the areas where the state takes the information and posts that data onto the California School Dashboard. That's what will be part of the fall update in December. But then there's local indicators that I'm going to go over tonight. So there's basics, which have to go with teachers, materials, and facilities. There's another one related to implementation of academic standards, parent engagement, local climate survey. And then this year, as typical of the state, there's a change. So we have now access to a broad course of study. And so I'm going to be going through each of these and they each have multiple parts. So the first one has to do with basic services and conditions at school. It's Priority One, and it has three parts. And this has to do with the Williams Settlement. So the first part is the number or percentage of missed assignments of teachers of English learners, total teacher missed assignments, and any vacant teacher positions. So we have no missed assignments, no missed assignments for English learners. And as of Day 20, we had two teacher vacancies. The part two of Priority One has to do with the number or percentage of students that do not have access to their own copies of standard design instructional materials. And at this point, we also had none. The third part has to do with the Williams Visit, which is the number of identified instances where facilities do not meet the Good Repair Standard. So this has actually changed over the past year. And you might remember actually from back, from the annual report that you received on December 1st, or I'm sorry, December 6th of 2017, where we now had to report what is it considered a Good Repairs deficiency? And that's where there's something that was actually fixed either onsite or it was, we were aware of it and there's already a work order in place. So last year, we had a total of 19. If that would have been years prior, it would have been zero because everything actually was aware of. It was either fixed onsite or had a work order in place to repair it. And I gave you the definitions because that has changed as well to where now all of ours were considered remedied Good Repair Facility Deficiencies. So that's where something was known, it was brought up, and it was addressed there onsite. The next priority has to do with implementation of academic, state academic standards. And this one is probably the most confusing piece, I apologize in advance. It has five parts. But we've chose as a district to use the Self-Reflection Tool. And so what happens when we do the Self-Reflection Tool is it looks at an implementation rubric. So when we're used to seeing rubrics 1 to 5, we always think of 1 being really not good and 5 being, you know, great. And this is more about how do we reflect upon our own practice and where we're at in the implementation of the state standards so that we can have continuous improvement of teachers getting better and teaching and learning improving. So here's kind of a sample. I know the writing's small on the screen, but I did provide a copy printed for you as well. Just to give you an idea of the teacher survey that goes out for this implementation of academic standards. And it shows you how it grows from, if we're in exploration, I'm aware of, up to full implementation of sustainability. I have like a deep understanding. So teachers self-evaluate themselves based on that survey. And so the next slides show you the results in each of those areas. So the first one has to do with the LEA, or the district's progress in providing professional learning and teaching in the core subject areas. And here you can see the rankings. So each of the subject areas, this has to do with where the teachers report this. We do only have about a third of our teachers complete the survey. And one thing that I'm really working on as we move forward and we get into the local indicators is really working with RIA to make sure that all of the teachers have an opportunity to complete that survey, so the results are the most valid. But you can see, we're basically along in the initial implementation stage, kind of is the majority in each of the subject areas. The second part has to do with making instructional materials available in core subject areas. This one had a little bit higher ranking in the implementation because you know, we've gone through adoption in some of the subject areas. And so there you can see the results for that as well, where the areas where we've actually done the adoptions, teachers rated that it was much higher as far as our implementation of those materials being available and aligned to the state standards. The third part has to do with implementing policies or programs. This one has to do with how does the district approach making sure that teachers are prepared to teach the subject areas? So it gives examples from the state like collaboration or professional learning community time. It talks about specific programs like, say, PSYOP. So things that we're doing that support the core. And again, based on that rubric, whenever you give a five-point rubric, one thing you'll notice, a lot of times you fall in the middle. Even if there's going to be individuals that scored it higher or lower. And so as we tabulate these results, but this is an area that we recognize we probably need to be a little more clear during the survey of what actually, what programs are actually available to support implementation of the state standards. Number four, rate the district's progress in implementing each of the following academic standards. As I said, we start with about one-third of the teachers completing the survey. And as we get into each of the subject areas, and because half of our teachers are elementary as well, we recognize that these results probably need some additional explanation as we move forward because we're not sure if everyone understands the career technical education and steps that are being taken in those standards related to instruction. Last one is rate the LEA, or the district's success in engaging the following activities of teachers and school administrators. And this one has a good takeaway for us because it has three parts. And the first part has to do with professional learning and groups of teachers as a whole. And so you can see the ranking there is higher. But then when we get to individual teachers or providing support for teachers on standards they have not yet mastered, we're a little lower on that rating scale. And so what we take away from that is we're good at providing PD for large groups or staffs of teachers, but we still need additional work to be able to tailor it more to their individual needs.
For the public, what's PD?
Oh, I'm sorry, Professional Development.
Thank you.
All right, so that one was lengthy. I'm going to move on to the next priority, which is Priority Three. This one's a little more straightforward, but it has two parts. And this one has to do, how are we as a district seeking input from parents and guardians in decision-making? And how are we promoting parent participation in our programs? And so seeking input from the school or parent, I'm sorry, seeking input from parents in the school or district decision-making. As you know, our district has been heavily involved in strategic planning and implementation. We have parents involved in all various levels, both at the district and at the school level, as well as serving on different teams as they do the work for the strategic plans. In addition, we do a combined LCAP Stakeholders Meeting where we bring a variety of stakeholders in. We make sure that as we do the actions and services related to the LCAP, they have a voice in those areas. And then another part of that is our parent advisory groups. So you know, we have our District Advisory Council, our English, District English Learner Advisory Council, and our District African American Parent Advisory Council. So how do we promote that participation? One of the things we've worked really hard on, you know, we were in our 10th Annual Parent Summit, which I believe all of you attend. And that's an opportunity where we can really get the word out of what we're doing, what programs, academic programs we have in place, as well as parent workshops, both at a district level and at a school level that supports and encourages parents to participate in programs. We've revitalized the Parents Center this last year. And so that's an area where parents now have another opportunity to go and learn about various topics that they select, as well as other programs available in our district. And then through Footsteps to Brilliance and the Literacy Initiative from Dr. Avila, we have parents that have participated in the Literacy Collaborative. Priority Six is the next area on the local indicators, and that has to do with school climate. And this is the easiest one of all of them because all we have to do is administer a local climate survey every other year. So we've selected as a district, along with most of the state, the California Healthy Kids Survey. The issue for us is when you look in the local indicators... The issue for us is when you look in the local indicator for the dashboard, when it's released, you'll see results from actually the 2017, 2016, 2017 California Healthy Kids Survey. Because we are right in the middle of administering that survey right now, which means you'll actually see those results in next year's local indicators, because of that every other year requirement, and them shortening the timeline of when to submit these, we don't have that data fresh yet. All right, so now the new one. Hopefully, I haven't confused you too much yet. This one even makes my head spin a little bit, because it has four parts, and I'm going to kind of summarize it for you. The first part has to do with, it's all about access to broad courses of study. And the first part has to do with, as a district, have we identified tools with which we can measure and monitor that students have access to a broad course of study? So we have three of them. One is, we work with a group called Transcript Evaluation Service, which basically takes a look at all of our high school courses and the students, and then when they've completed it, and gives us data back on areas, and even down to individual students of areas that we need to make changes. The second has to do, we've been working with an A through G audit from Riverside County Office of Education, where they actually go through and kind of do a similar survey, but it has that focus on A through G. And the last one has to do, as you'll see in the dashboard release, the college and career indicator data. And so that's where we can then take the data from the state, and then compare it to each of those other two tools, and look at what trends are we seeing, and what changes do we need to make. It's very high school focused, because as you know, when it comes to broad course of study, elementary has, everyone's in the same course, middle school has a very prescribed coursework as well. So they're really looking at the high school courses and how you're ensuring students have access to a broad course of study. So part two is, once you have that tool, what are you doing with it, right? So, and what do you see from it? So kind of summarize. So through those tools, and as well as when you look at that college career indicator, what we're seeing is the same trend that we see in other areas, where we have specific student groups that are not performing at the same level of the entire population. So those are African-American, our English learners, and our students with disabilities. So between those two tools, those are the areas that you can see we need to continue to work on. Part Three, so you have the tool, you get the summary, what kind of barriers are you seeing in place? So one of the things that we continue to work on is making sure that all of our courses are aligned through A to G. We've gotten close, because there are quite a variety of courses that have been converted to A through G, but the idea is that all courses would have the option to be A through G aligned. The next issue that we have, as you've seen from data that I've shared over the past few years related to CASP, or to the state test, is as students get into middle school and high school, we have a high number of students that need intervention. So they come to the high school with gaps, maybe in reading, and so rather than be able to go into all the courses that they could, they're into an intervention course to remedy something that they still have a gap for. And then you pair that with, because they're in an intervention course, or maybe they fail their English or their math course, then they have to repeat that course. So as they get into the upper grades, they start to have to repeat a course, rather than, again, have access to additional courses that meet the broad course of study. And then another option, based on the college and career indicator, is really making sure as a district, we're increasing our dual or concurrent enrollment options for students, because for the career and college indicator, there's five ways you can meet it, and one of them is being enrolled in a dual or concurrent enrollment option. So that's another area where we're putting attention. So you get through those first three parts, and the last part says, so what's your plan as a district? How are you addressing it? So one of the things that we've done this year, as you're aware, is put a counselor on special assignment. This individual has the opportunity to work more closely with each of the counselors at each of the high schools, targeting on those student groups that have been identified that need additional support. We've been working on completion of four-year plans, and actually even working into the middle schools, where students can kind of start to do a four-to-six-year plan, and that way, they know what courses they need to take and what the requirements are to be college and career ready. We've also made a change last year, which came to you for approval, was the default of the third year of science to meet the D requirement. So rather than allowing, where they could only do two years of science and then still graduate, now they're required to take a third year of science. And then that last piece has to do with identifying those courses that are not meeting A through G. And one of the trends we're seeing is our career and technical education, as well as our English learner courses. And one that we also are aware of is sometimes our special education courses are not A through G aligned, and so there needs to be changes in those areas as well. So kind of in summary, you know, one thing I do like about the local indicators is it's not the state telling us. It's our opportunity to really identify the areas, and kind of determine how we're monitoring it throughout the year, so that we can start to show improvement in those areas. We're still new at it, you know, it's only our second year having to do the local indicators, as well as a new one this year, so now we're just in year one of that one. But I kind of wanted to just give you a quick summary of each one, because I threw a lot of information at you. So when it comes to Priority One, we know that we meet or exceed basic services and conditions at school. Obviously, we had those good repair deficiencies, but based on prior years, it would have been none, but now we have to report them a little more detailed than we did in the past. Implementation of state academic standards, we're really working on making sure that there's improvements. We're seeing that as we bring in the adoptions, then obviously, there's a higher correlation to those alignment to the state standards. So that'll just be ongoing work. Parent engagement, we always want more parent engagement. So every time I'm at the podium, I want to plead for parents to get involved, but we are really trying through the strategic planning, and through the Local Control Accountability Plan, as well as the renovation of the parent center, to really make sure that parents have a voice of the decisions here in the district. Priority Six is easy. We are collecting that school climate information. The data is shared through the local indicators, and I can bring that back to you when we get the new year results. And then that new one, broad courses of study, you know, as you saw, there's quite a few components, but I feel confident we're pretty detailed in what we've identified, and what the plan is to start to make changes and improvements in that area, and so we can share that as we go through each year with the local indicators. Lastly, we've met this, we now can consider ourselves met for the local indicators. As soon as I finish here, I'm going back to my office and hitting finalize those results, because I've shared them with you in an open session of the board meeting. We will have them submitted by November 16th. If you want more information, you can go to our website to look at the LCAP, and then I encourage everyone to check out the California School Dashboard when it's released in December.
Questions or comments from the board?
Question. Please.
If we're low in one area, such as science, how will that affect the way the state looks at us? Will they just help us with more funds? Or will they say, you've got X number, you've got so much time to improve, or, or nothing? How is that going to affect us?
From the local indicators, there is nothing, because it's really meant to be a place where we're reflecting upon our own growth in areas that we need to improve. Now, if you want something specific about where science is in its implementation, because it's really the last to go, I would have to call Dr. Ed D'Souza if you wanted to answer more specific questions.
Yeah, I was wondering why, I thought we adopted a science textbook, and why we were marked low on the science area.
So you know, we created our own textbooks, and again, this was not about data in terms of results, it's in terms of implementation, teacher perception of implementation, and he said about, how many, about 20%, about 20% of the people answered the survey. But November, last week, the state board actually adopted state science materials. We were waiting one year to see what the gaps in our materials are, before we just rush ahead and adopt.
Okay.
Comment? Please.
One other comment. I know sometimes our staff, our teachers, can sometimes look at this rhetoric and mandates as offensive sometimes, something extra on their plate. If there's any way we can kind of do a summary for them, to explain to them, this is here to help us with our kids, it's not to be punitive, that way it kind of relaxes them a little bit. Because if we don't evaluate ourselves a little bit, then we don't know if we're moving in the right direction. And so it kind of, just to put them at ease a little bit, so they can appreciate the work that's being done.
I really appreciate your comment, and just so the board understands, it's actually an anonymous survey that we conduct. We do require that they log in through their Rialto USD Google account. That way, we can only have one response from each person, but it's completely anonymous. Lisa was very helpful this last year in getting it to increase, because I told her, you know, it only takes about two to three minutes to complete. And I think, again, it's something new, so as we have more time with it, I think people will be more willing to provide more answers to give us better feedback.
And at least, if we don't do a summary or something, somehow get back to those teachers and tell them how much we appreciated their input.
Great idea. Thank you so much.
Other comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions. The first one has to do with access to broad course of study. And in Priority Seven, you have how, what we're doing. And one of the, two of the things were the Transcript Evaluation Service, as well as the A through G audit from RCOE. Transcript Evaluation Service, that's only going to be for our high school students, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and so the A through G audit from Riverside County Office of Education, just wanted to talk about, is that only done around the courses at the high school level?
Yes, as well.
So if we're talking about access to broad course of study, why haven't we done, and is this possible in the future, or whatever? I know it's possible, and I know we can do it, so I'm answering my own question, but I need to put that out there. So the Transcript Evaluation Service, because A through G courses are, students can actually get A through G credit for courses they take in middle school, why haven't we done Transcript Evaluation Service at the middle school level, and ordered it out around the access in those courses at our middle schools? So those students actually have access to those courses in the middle school? What's your input thought? Was Dr. D'Souza, is he going to have to run?
Yes, so for this, I'm actually going to defer back to Dr. D'Souza, because he's the one that's working with Transcript Evaluation Service.
So right now, the only course which is A through G at the middle school is the Math One course. And right now, because of the three-year requirement of math at the high school, and we don't want kids giving up math, and actually, in 2025, I think it's, this year, seventh graders, it's going to go to be a four-year requirement. And so that's why we kept it as a normal course, and then we accelerate those students at the high school.
Okay, so we don't have access, our kids can't take, right now, only Math One? They can't take foreign language and get A through G credit to satisfy a foreign language in eighth grade?
Right now, we don't have any foreign language at the middle school level. That was done a few years ago, when the ninth graders went to the high school. And we offer electives, but none of those are A through G courses.
Okay.
There was a wish list on one school when they did their strategic planning, to see if we could explore that, because like you, with the dual language coming up, that might be something we look at in the future.
So the only one in our middle schools now that we have, who is Math One?
Math One, but it doesn't count as A through G. It is accelerated.
The credit, to satisfy the credit, right, for, okay. And then so...
We do, we are training the middle school counselors on the 29th, how to do four-year plans, so then they are familiar with that, because right now, it just falls on the high school, so we're taking it down to the middle school level.
Okay, so that's actually a segue into my next question, which is on, again, access to broad course of study, Priority Seven, completion of a four-year plan. So what does that actually entail? I know what a four-year plan is, but I'm saying, what does that mean for the district in reference to students and in reference to their families?
So a couple of things. Last year, because we were waiting for synergy to help us to get that four-year plan, which never happened, and I have to give credit to Mr. Clark Wilson at Carter High School, he actually used the Google Classroom to build a four-year plan. So all our three high schools, the students actually put in their plan, and then worked with their counselors to go ahead and change it if they need to, but there is an actual four-year plan for each student at the high school. We're now transitioning to middle school, and we're actually doing a whole career cruising thing on from, on December 10 to 14, so kids are familiar with the high school courses and what a four-year plan is. And simultaneously, we're training the counselors, so these kids will have a kind of a skeleton four-year plan before they go to February to the high school, so it won't be something foreign that they're learning for the first time, what is a CTE course? What is the science courses? What are the math courses? So that's what we are doing.
So my second part of that question is just, are parents being involved in the four-year plans? And are, do we have any plans to ensure that the parents are aware of what the four-year plan is and where their students fall in?
So right now, I can't remember the dates exactly, but the PSAT results come out in the end of December, or middle of December, just before they leave, but we've planned three nights, one at Eisenhower, one at Rialto High, and one at Carter High School, so the feeder eighth grade parents. And the 10th grade parents would learn more about, you know, the four-year plans, about SAT, PSAT, all that.
Okay, and I would just suggest that, as a model, what happened with the CASP test this past year, where some of our middle, I mean, excuse me, elementary schools, I know Robin McMillan and Principal Dominguez did it, where they took the test, and the parents met, and they sat and went through and worked with the students, so they actually understood it? If there's an opportunity to do that, because that's the only way people, you know, send the form home, nobody knows what all that stuff is, to really work through it.
That's a good suggestion.
That will help our students and our families.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. D'Souza, my last question is actually not for you, so...
No, it's okay.
Last question is, the school climate survey, we do it every other year, and the results are coming in, but what do we do with the information?
I'll leave that, I think, to John.
It's just a requirement to do the survey. What do we do, if we do anything?
One thing I enjoy about actually presenting is, when I don't have the answer, I get to call someone else up to the microphone. So I'm actually going to call Angela Brantley to answer that question.
That's the sound of a great man, you know, when you bring the team, right?
Good evening, good evening. We administer this survey two years ago, because we're in the middle of it now. The results that came out two years ago, we've utilized those actually to develop all of our suicide prevention protocols. So Ms. Rubio, our PIS coordinator, she got a team together, they looked at the results, they saw a lot of concerns that our student had in terms of feeling safe at school, feeling confident, concerned, some suicidal thoughts and things of that nature. So we wanted to make sure that we started with those kind of more serious concerns. And so we've developed our suicide protocol prevention. We're working on assists, where we just sent a team of five people to assist training, which is a training for suicide prevention. They're going to come back, and we're going to develop trainer of trainers, and start going out to our schools and getting all of our crisis response teams together. So we utilize that information to develop this whole last two years of work for suicide prevention. Once it comes out again, with about January or February, we should be able to do a presentation, so we can kind of see some other areas that we want to focus on, and then put together strategies to move forward with those. So we kind of, each time we do it, find areas that we can actually put our hands to some work and develop some support for our students, so, does that make sense?
Makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I just want to add on one thing, too, just for the public.
Oh, now, okay, now you...
She answered wonderfully, but I did want to point out, that information's also available on the LCAP, because it actually leads to the actions and services that she mentioned.
Dr. McDuffie, do you have anything on the topic?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, great presentation. Okay, we move into comments, public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Dr. McDuffie? Yes, we have Russell Silva. Long time no see, welcome.
Good evening, board members, administration, viewing audience. My name's Russell Silva. For those of you that didn't, weren't able to attend our fair event at the Legal League this Saturday, it wound up being a great ordeal. And I say ordeal, because it, I was one of the judges, and it just fascinated me as to the abilities and the visions that these middle schools, and even our elementary schools. All five of our middle schools participated, and three elementary schools participated in it. In that, we give awards for every, for different levels, and some of those awards, the students actually get to go off to Legoland to participate in the next, into the next room. You heard earlier that Kolb moved forward, but Kolb won the first overall participation award, and that means the student, the group actually scored high overall in all the categories, as well as did Casey, the magnificent hint. They, as an elementary school, came in second place in the overall. Both those schools are going to Legoland. Cussera also is going to Legoland, as so is Morgan Elementary School. So we had four top winners. So we had four top winners going there. But the interesting thing about this is it was geared towards space and how can we survive in space? And the children were just thinking way outside the box. And, excuse me, and there was one instance where a school actually came through and they went and took a real live event. The space station had a little hole in it, about two millimeters wide, and it was actually draining the atmosphere within the space station. And instead of, one of the astronauts went and did the Dutch boy thing and stuck his finger in the hole to keep it from draining. Couldn't do that throughout the entire process, so they had to come up with an idea. And they came, they had this what's called a capton tape. And they put the capton tape over it with a little bit of adhesive and it seemed to work until they were able to come up with a better plan. This one group from Chino came up with an idea that you use the capton, capton tape in conjunction with aluminum and copper tape that are used on the space station along with an adhesive that epoxy adhesive that would dry and fill in the hole. They took this idea to one of this Boeing, the space aerospace place in Los Angeles and talked to one of their engineers who said this was a magnificent idea. So you have these children that are thinking way outside of the box to come up with ideas and solve them. So if you didn't attend, you missed something great. We had a lot of fun and the kids enjoyed themselves. Next year, don't forget, it's in November, come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Great report. Thank you for volunteering. Dr. McDuffie?
Next, we have Michael Montano.
Good evening.
Not alone this time.
Doesn't matter the topic, we're never alone in Rialto.
Okay, so I've asked before that we, some of our staff would like you to come and speak with us, you as a board plural, and we are still asking that. Our superintendent had reached out to us, but we were presented with, I guess logistical challenges, we'll call them, that although we're kind of in question on, on some of that. I know one of our site reps had emailed you, by the way, this is tonight, a couple of people had to leave early, but this is classified and staff here tomorrow, which is not even half of us. Again, we would like you to come hear us. We really don't want to come here and speak out individually, but...
Appreciate that.
The consensus is that if, if that's what it takes for you to hear us, because we truly feel that you do need to hear us out with some of our concerns, if we have to, we have people that are willing to come and speak out, but we'd much rather not do that in this public setting. So again, if you, you know, we're asking that you reconsider and, and to, you know, if we can set up a time that you can hear both classified and certificated with, with our concerns, that we feel some of them are very serious in nature. So again, just please reconsider and...
Appreciate that very much, you know, more than you know.
Was a meeting already set up?
I know one of the emails, it showed a, the dates, it was a very logistical challenge in trying to get a meeting set up. And then when there was a date we had in mind, which was a Thursday, we sent a response on, actually, I sent a response on Tuesday, and I heard back on Friday, oops, I don't know how this got overlooked.
Okay.
Oh.
And you're the point of contact?
I'm sorry?
You are the point of contact?
Yes.
And basically, what you need is an after-school meeting in another location?
We would like another location at a time where both certificated and classified would be able to be heard out by at least one or two or all of board members.
And that should not be a problem, so...
All, all board members would, would really be a conflict.
We have at least two.
Yeah, we could do up to two.
You can only have two, we can't have more than that.
At least one, we, at least one, we just want to make sure that the board does hear firsthand our, our concerns.
Okay, okay. I will get with the superintendent. It's, it's a courtesy, but you've, you've come, you've gone through the, the steps, so to speak, and this board hears you and will, will meet with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any ideas for a time and a location, talk them through and let me know because I'll contact you probably tomorrow, email.
Thank you so much.
Dr. McDuffie?
And we have Celia Saravia.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, members of the board.
Presidente, Mr. Martinez.
President, Mr. Martinez.
Vice Presidente, Mr. Montes.
Vice Presidente, Mr. Montes.
Doctor McDuffie.
Doctor McDuffie.
Audiencia.
And...
Soy Celia Saravia.
I am Celia Saravia.
And represent a grupo de apoyo de padres de niños especiales.
And I represent a parent support group for special needs children.
Y esta noche queremos felicitar al vicepresidente, Mr. Montes.
Tonight, we want to congratulate Mr. Montes, the vice president.
And Ms. Walker.
And Ms. Walker.
Por la reciente elección en donde resultaron ganadores.
For their election, their recent...
(la risas). Eso quiere decir...
That means...
Que la comunidad estamos de acuerdo con el trabajo que están haciendo.
That the community agrees with the work you've been doing.
Con nuestro distrito.
With our districts.
Los padres estamos felices.
The parents are happy.
Porque nuestro board de educación.
Because our board of education.
Continúen trabajando juntos.
Continues working together.
Con nuestro superintendente, Dr. Avila.
With our superintendent, Dr. Avila.
Estamos orgullosos.
We are proud.
Por cómo han venido trabajando.
For the way you've been working.
También felicitamos al doctor Avila.
We also congratulate Dr. Avila.
Por los programas de inclusión en nuestro distrito.
For the inclusion programs in our districts.
Porque los salones de clases de educación especial.
Because the special education classrooms.
Ya no estarán aislados.
Will no longer be isolated.
Serán incluidos en las áreas de educación regular.
They'll be included in the general education areas.
A petición del doctor Avila.
By petition of Dr. Avila.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Porque los padres venimos pidiendo la inclusión de nuestros estudiantes de educación especial.
Because with the parents have been asking for the inclusion of our special education children.
Esperemos que, esperamos que todos apoyemos.
We hope that we all support.
Y trabajemos unidos por nuestros estudiantes.
And work together for our students.
And Ms. Bridget Ely, directora de educación especial.
And Ms. Bridget Ely, the director of special education.
Gracias por trabajar por nuestros estudiantes.
Thank you for working for our students.
Gracias por la junta que tuvimos el 9 de noviembre con ella.
Thank you for the meeting we had with her on the 9th of November.
Nos dio mucha información.
She gave us a lot of information.
Fue excelente la presentación.
It was an excellent presentation.
Y aprovecho también para invitar a todos los padres de educación especial.
And I also take the opportunity to invite all the special education parents.
Para que siempre participen.
To always participate.
Porque es muy buena oportunidad para educarnos.
Because it is a great opportunity for us to educate ourselves.
Aprovecho también la oportunidad.
I also take the opportunity.
Para invitarlos a todos.
To invite all of you.
A nuestra celebración de Navidad.
To our Christmas celebration.
De los niños especiales.
For the special needs children.
Que será el viernes 7 de diciembre.
Which will take place on Friday, the 7th of December.
De tres y media a ocho y media de la noche.
From 3:30 to 8:30 PM.
En el salón de la iglesia de Santa Catalina de Siena.
At the Santa Catalina de Siena Church in the hall.
Que está ubicada en el 339.
Which is located on 339.
North Sicamur Avenida.
North Sicamur Avenue.
In Rialto.
In Rialto.
Todos son bienvenidos.
All of you are welcome.
Esperamos contar con la presencia de todos.
We hope to see all of you there.
Y como siempre, será un honor contar con su presencia.
And as always, it'll be an honor to host you.
Nuevamente, felicidades a nuestra mesa directiva.
Once again, congratulations to our board of education.
Y a nuestro superintendente por su buen trabajo.
And our superintendent for his good work.
Felicidades a Mr. Thompson.
Congratulations, Mr. Thompson.
Y a todo su equipo por, por su trabajo.
And his entire team for their work.
A John, a Doctor De Souza and a Angela.
And Doctor De Souza and...
Por la propuesta que están haciendo, es muy bueno escuchar cómo está creciendo nuestro distrito.
For the proposals they bring, it is a great thing to hear how much our district is growing.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. McDuffie, are we done with?
That's all we have, yes.
Okay. We move to public comments on the agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Dr. McDuffie?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. Comments from association executive board members, Rialto Education Association? I'm getting the signal. Welcome.
Good evening, board. I'd like to congratulate Dina Walker and Edgar Montes on their victories the other night. Great to have you both back. And I have some invitations for you. I remember a couple of weeks ago, I asked you to write down the school board dinner at the Mission Inn, so here are your invitations, if I can approach. And before I approach, I have one more request. I've talked to a number of teachers who may be retiring this year and they have expressed an interest in subbing. And I know a couple of years ago, I've asked you to please do a resolution to get a waiver from CalSTR so they can start right away in August and not have to wait till after Christmas. So if we could do that again this year, I think we'll have a, a nice pool for Ms. Kramer and Ms. McGyver Gibbs to draw from, okay?
Dr. McDuffie, if you would carry that to Dr. Avila.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for the invitations. We're so glad we can assist with the SERP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, California School Employees Association.
Good evening, Raquel Torres, president of CSCA. And I'd like to thank our two endorces, Edgar Montes and Dina Walker, for their reelection to, for another school board session. And I also am glad to see that Hugh Banks Elementary will be honoring our, our past CSCA member, Isabella Davidson, and it looks like the NPR will be named after her. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Communication Workers of America.
And basically, it was my first time to go to one of the meetings in Rialto that usually the AVP would go to, so that was quite interesting. And I'll probably actually continue to go to that because they seem to be having that meeting on the same day as the one for San Bernardino. And that person can't be into places at once, so it'll probably be me.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rialto School Managers Association. Crickets. Dr. McDuffie, you're sitting in for the superintendent. Not everyone knows you, so tell us a little bit about yourself and whatever else you have to report.
Hope they do. Good evening, everyone. As you know, as you know, it is a rare day that our superintendent, Dr. Avila, is not sitting up here. Please know that he's at a conference with members of the special education team to bring back to Rialto what, what they've learned, so we're looking forward to that. There were some student successes and also information that he wanted to pass along. So first, I want to say congratulations to the East Kewanis Club of Rialto Students of the Month. We have from Eisenhower Principal Camacho, from Carter Principal Dr. Chavez, they helped me this morning to honor Jordan Dixon and Jamari Henderson from Eisenhower. And from Carter High School, we honored Gabriel Thomas Wright and Janaiah Shaheed. Also, I'd like to say that I was at Cordiak Elementary School last Friday where they, where they honored their veterans. I was proud to be there and to not only represent the district, but to be honored myself as a, as a veteran. And they did an awesome job with honoring their parents who were veterans. The, the students did an awesome job, so just want to thank them for that. And just I hope all the veterans, all my brothers and sisters of the armed forces had a wonderful Veterans Day. We also want to congratulate some of our schools for the Lego competition, as mentioned earlier, over the weekend at Rialto Middle School. At the first Lego robotics competition, all five RUSD middle schools, Frisbee, J. Hugh, Kolb, Cussera and Rialto Middle Schools, along with Casey, Morgan and Werner Elementary Schools participated, along with 18 other area schools. And the following schools will be going to the Southern California Championship. Congratulations to first place overall, as mentioned before, Kolb Middle School, and second place overall, Casey, the Magnificent Ten. And then board, first place go, went to Cussera Middle School, and second place to Morgan's Mustang Bots. And so we congratulate them. And finally, tonight, Dr. Avila, along with myself, will also like to thank Carter High School, Kolb and Cussera Middle Schools, Fitzgerald and Cordiak Elementary Schools, their leadership teams, as well as the support staff, teachers, parents, who pulled together with district officials after hearing about the fires in DeVeau and Fontana last night. We're all aware of the devastation that can occur with the weather conditions here in California that we've been experiencing. Our thoughts are with the communities devastated by the Woolsey Fire and also in Northern California. We were informed this morning by our fire chief that there were no imminent, there was no imminent danger to our, any of our schools or properties, and we're thankful for that as, and as a result, our schools remained open today. Although South Coast Air Quality Management Department informed us that the air quality was good today and will be good tomorrow, we still took precautionary measures at the affected areas near the north end schools and had district officials assist through the day. We appreciate the cooperation of our parents as well, and I know we'll get through this unpredictable fire season through unity, kindness and compassion. I wish, finally, I want to wish all of our Rialto community members Happy Thanksgiving. We're going to have that next week, it's coming by really fast. And with that Thanksgiving, I, I leave you with a quote from Martin Luther King Jr., he says, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are we doing for others?" So let us take that with us from tonight. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Board Member Ayala?
Thank you, President Martinez. To start with, word of caution with the time change comes along, earlier darkness, and we should heed that our kids will be out there on the roads a little earlier, you know, they're on their way home from events. And if we can do anything to make things safer for them, let's do it. And one of the things we can do is just maybe in their naps, in their, in their backpacks, put a yellow shirt, bright clothing. A lot of times, kids have a tendency to focus on these dark colors, but when the sun goes down, they need something light. Sometimes the tennis shoes that sparkle, anything to help them, because they, they're just kids and they're just playing, they're not focused, they're running around playing tag behind the trees. And, and people on their cell phones still, in their cars, they're on their way home, they want to go shopping, they're, it's a, it's a tough time. So let's take care of our kids, that's, that's a caution right there. Okay, story time, in case anybody's ready, I'm ready. This story, you know, I try to tell you personal things that happened to me. All right, so I'm trying to fix a machine, I'm trying to get a part for this machine. I can't find this part nowhere. It, it's going to have to be made. So then I start calling various people, everybody tells me the same thing. It's a specialty part, you're going to have to have somebody make it for you. So I just kept trying. And finally, I get to this one person who wants... And finally, I get to this one person who wants to talk. And so I'm just listening. I'm just listening. And all of a sudden, I said, hey, I'm kind of a talker too sometimes. We got two talkers here, but we're going to have to have somebody listening here. By chance, did you grow up in the same neighborhood I did? And he said, did you go to JP High School? And I said, I did. The reason I'm bringing this up is because he invited me down to his shop. I thought he worked there. Turned out to be his shop. He had employees. He said, do you remember me? I said, no. I was kind of quiet in high school. I'm surprised you know me. He says, no, you do ring a bell. And I found out the reason he knew me is because his wife used to know my girlfriend. So I went to the same school. All he had to do, just because I had a connection, before I was leaving out the door, he says, why are you messing with this machine, this antiquated machine? I said, I'm retired. I stay busy. He says, why don't you take one of my machines home? And I've got an invoice here for $20,000, and you can make some money. And I said, what about your guys here? He said, I'm about ready to lay off a couple of these guys. That's not right. But the lesson here that I want you to share with our kids is that he was willing to give me an opportunity, just because I went to the same school that he went to. These other guys, they grew up somewhere else. Our kids, whether they know it or not, are going to be given opportunities, who knows when, because they went to Rialto High School, they went to Eisenhower. These relationships are very precious. We need to communicate to our kids that it isn't always just academics. Try to find something that you connect with, with others. Be positive. Make sure these, your classmates remember you for being a positive and being a good person. So here in Rialto, you know, this is where I moved to retire. People say, why don't you go somewhere else? Because this town I'm proud of. It is a place where we respect each other. This is a place that you can be yourself. This is a place where we respect diversity, okay? And let's continue that legacy by treating each other with respect and dignity. And in the long run, our own kids will pick up on that legacy. You never know, somebody may offer them an opportunity just because they went to Rialto Unified School District. Thank you so much for sharing just a few words with you.
Excellent story.
Another story? That's true. That just happened this week. It really did.
Board Member Walker.
So storytime. You ready? I'm going to emulate Joe here. Just a story, you know, the fires, the Devores fires, and my house is like, we literally were six houses down from where the fire was on Riverside Avenue, literally. And it just is, it's kind of surreal because you've never, I've had many fire drills, but never one at my own house, right? So in school, you know, all the years we've had fire drills, I haven't had a fire drill in college before. Never had a fire drill at my house. So when the fire comes, we didn't really know what to do, except for when we opened up the door the second time, and our house was full of smoke already, and the sky was just like orange and red, we were just like, get out of here, right? Just get in the car and get out. Two things happened. My daughter was, my youngest daughter was crying because she was just so scared because she couldn't believe. She's like, oh my God, and she just started crying. I'm like, we're not going to be able to get in the car, and she's crying. And so the second thing was, I started thinking about, what am I supposed to put, what am I supposed to gather, right? You're supposed to gather, what are the important things? And I looked around our house and thought about what was upstairs, and everything I had already was standing right there. So we just said, get in the car. We got our phone. I got a charger. Got the phone, as you know, three hours after we all have any. So I got the phone, got the charger. I did put a computer in my bag, just in case. And we got in the car and we left. And it just really just made me think about the things about, what do you value? Because I have a lot of things in my house. If, you know, I've got technology in the house, I've got, you know, you've got your fancy TVs, you know, all this other kind of stuff. I don't have a fur coat, but, no, well, faux fur. But you know, you just start thinking about those things. And so we were just glad to get out and everything be okay. But later on, that, early that morning, maybe about 2:00 in the morning, we get a call from our neighbor. We're at one of our other family members' house, and says, I'm calling you because your garage door is open, and I think I saw somebody walking out of your house. And so for those of you who know, about two years ago, our house was robbed. And so I'm just thinking, oh, a fire, and now we got robbed. I'm just, you know. But our neighbor called us, told us we get up there, go back to the house, and luckily the police let us through, and they came and walked through and came to the house with us. And while we're on the, while we were going through, Arturo was talking to Paul and was telling him, like, man, if you need anything, he said, because I watched him. He said, I watched him, I know the car that was in front of your house. I followed him, so I know a cul-de-sac where they went, you know, and everything. And he says, so, and I have my tapes from my house, my cameras, so in the morning, we'll look at it. We're going to find him. If they took anything, we're going to find him. And I thought that was so cool. I thought it was so cool because I thought about being your brother's keeper, right? Just being your brother's keeper. I'm like, I'm, you know, tomorrow, I'm going to go over there and be like, hey, you know, and everything. Every time I get mad when the music's too loud over here, I'm going to be like, Arturo's my dude, right? It's my dude. But you know, the thing was about being your brother's keeper, and this ties back just to being able to be here again, so being reelected. I am very thankful for everybody who supported, myself, Mr. Montez, in making sure that we were able to return here. I'm even thankful for the people who didn't vote for me. I'm good, right? If you voted, I'm glad that you just were engaged and you represented, said your voice. But it just gave me an opportunity to say, here I am again, in a sense where my neighbor was our, you know, our brother's keeper to watch over us. I'm just glad I'm back again to help to watch over our students here in Rialto. Thank you.
Clerk O'Kelly, should we pass the stool your way?
Well, Dina and I live in the same neighborhood. She, I think, lives a little closer to Riverside Avenue. I was a little bit back. But last night was a very scary night. And I'm watching TV in my house at 10:30 at night, and all of a sudden, someone is pounding on my front door. And I thought, oh my God, what is that? So I go to the door, and I didn't open it. I said, who is it? And all of a sudden, I hear this woman, and she's talking so fast, I can't understand her. So I opened the door, and it's my neighbor. And she says, fire, fire, fire! And I go out front and look towards Riverside Avenue, and all you could see was red. I mean, it was just that bad. And I remember thinking, as I've been watching the news, as everyone has been, about the Malibu Fire and the Northern California Fire, is I remember thinking, oh, please God, don't let that happen here. And our winds are famous for that. The winds kick up, and it will take, doesn't take anything to get a full-blown blaze started. So I was very grateful that she came and told me. I called some neighbors. I saw everybody coming out of their houses. We're all trying to figure out, how close is it? And everybody eventually decided to wait until they evacuated us, which thankfully they never did. But it was, you know, I went through this once before in 2003. There was a big fire up there, and Rosina Ranch wasn't built yet, so it was all brushed, the whole wash area there on Riverside Avenue. And my husband and I had a two-story house then, and I remember standing up, we were up in our bedroom, looking out the window at the wash, and we just saw this solid wall of fire coming towards us. And I had my mother, who at that time was shortly before she passed, and she was very ill, and she had a big oxygen machine. And I had my grandmother, who was like 89 years old, and a German shepherd and a cat who hated the car. And I was all, I remember just thinking, how am I going to evacuate? Because we were pretty sure we were going to, they called for voluntary evacuations, but right when the fire hit Riverside Avenue, the wind shifted and it went down Riverside Avenue, never jumped over the street. Yeah, to your house, right? So it was, I just want to give praise and thank the firefighters and the first responders. They were on that fire so fast, and that, and the united forces that attacked it is how they got it under control and saved our houses. And I deeply appreciate that and all that they do. And to me, they're worth their weight in gold. So anything firefighters want, they have it. Thank you. And Happy Thanksgiving. It's a very special day. Enjoy it with the people you love.
That's right. Good story. Vice President Montez.
Thank you, Board President, Mr. Martinez. I just would like to, first and foremost, give thanks for the danger that was put out so fast last night. I too had family and friends up in the Las Colinas area, across the street from Riverside Avenue where the fire was, and you know, how scary. I actually didn't know about the fire until this morning. I went to bed early last night. I wasn't on Facebook, you know, we don't, we don't have TV, regular TV anymore. We just do internet TV. So I didn't find out about it until this morning, but I was glad to hear that everyone was safe, found out that some family was evacuated, and just, you know.
A few people were evacuated.
Just for safety precautions, you know, and luckily, nothing really, really serious happened. You know, and I can only imagine, Mr. Ayala lives right there in, you know, the former golf course.
Looking at the TV.
You know, I, yeah, I could imagine worrying, you know, the former golf course lighting up because it's so, it's so, it's full of wilderness now.
Yeah, the coyotes gave me plenty of warnings.
So I'm very grateful that nothing, you know, that that was put out really quick and nothing real serious came of it. I also just want to remind people from the community, people from the district family who come to the board meetings, that we all, we're all concerned, we all hear you. You know, don't ever feel like nobody wants you not to come to the board meetings and share your concerns. We do appreciate the opportunity to always be able to meet and listen. But I know that there's a lot of work to do district-wide. We've made tremendous progress. We've made tremendous strides. We've got a lot of work to do. I don't think it would be fair for anyone to say that any of us here have gotten too comfortable and we just, you know, are just slacking off. That's not the case. We want to better serve the community. We want to better our district in any way that we can. And that includes listening to the concerns and suggestions of our parents and our staff. So I just ask for parents and staff to be patient. I haven't, I don't think this board, at least I have not lost faith in our leadership's ability to be just, to be fair, and to be given the opportunity to look into matters that can arise. But I know that regardless, this board will do everything it can to be, to make sure that our district is fair and just and will listen. So thank you for coming here to share your concerns. I'm sure under the direction of our board president and the rest of the board, matters will be looked at. I also want to remind everybody that I'm a father first in this, on the school board. I'm not just, you know, a school board member. I'm a father first. First and foremost, many of you are fathers and mothers too. Many of you have children yourself, and it's really easy to look at a school board member or a deputy superintendent and just say, well, you know, that's that person, and that's his problem, or those are his kids. It's not that easy. We all care about our own kids just as much as we care about other people's kids, sometimes even more. So, and I hardly rarely speak about my kids. I hardly rarely mention them or praise them, but maybe I should do so more often to remind people that I'm a father first and foremost, and I love my kids, just like everybody else loves their own kids. This weekend, my sons, Abel and Angel, who attend Eisenhower High School, they're seniors, won a tournament. They play for, not only do they play for the volleyball team, the varsity volleyball team at Eisenhower, but they also play for an outside soccer league. And recently, their team, the Iceland team from the Rialto Youth Soccer League that plays over at Jerry Eves Park, their team won their championship for their league. And this weekend, they got on the All-Star team. They were selected to be, played for the All-Star team, representing Rialto. And they played, they played this weekend, they played Big Bear for the championship. And they brought, they brought home for Rialto the championship cup after four years that it had been gone. And so I want to give them, I want to give them a, you know, a round of applause and a thanks, and I love them, and I'll continue to support them just as much and just as fiercely as anybody else would support their own kids. They're great boys. They're doing, they're doing really good in school with their grades and their sports. And I'm just lucky that they're nothing like I was at that age, thank God. But I'm really proud of them, and I want them to know, and I want their teammates to know, their coach and everybody, that I think everybody in Rialto, once they're here, will be proud to know that they brought the championship cup back to Rialto. They played some very difficult teams from Yucaypa, from Arango, all over the area, and they won. I also just want to give a shout out to my six-year-old, Quetzal, first grader over at Morgan Elementary. We made the mistake of not putting our son in early education, you know, preschool. We decided to keep him with us until kindergarten. And so we realized, you know, when you're, when you're young parents, when you're young parents, you learn the hard way. We realized the big mistake that we made by not bringing him in early, because when he started, all the kids that had preschool already knew their ABCs, already knew their 1-2-3s, already knew a lot of stuff. And he had an idea, you know, me and my wife, being the busy parents that we are, we worked with them here and there, but he was really behind in kindergarten. And now, as a first grader, he just blows our mind. He's writing, he's reading, and he's spelling. And in kindergarten, it was like, you know, we're just, it was like pulling teeth. And he's made tremendous strides, so I'm proud of him too. Academically, he's gone from A to Z, and I'm very proud of him too. And he also plays for Rialto Youth Soccer League. His team was Holland. They didn't win the league, but they really tried really hard. And a big shout out to him too. So I thank my wife, first and foremost, for doing such a wonderful job with our kids. And I'm very happy and very lucky, really, to have such a supportive wife. The election results are still not final, but I think we all pretty much know that, you know, me and Dina, you know, are in. And big congratulations to her. Very, very happy that she got reelected as well. And big congratulations to everybody that helped you, and, you know, and very grateful, myself, to all the parents, all of the staff. And, you know, and, and very grateful, myself, to all the parents, all of the staff, to the union support, to everybody in the community who, who made it possible because our, our victories would not have been possible had not been for the support of everybody in and outside of the district. So thank you again. And with that, happy holidays. Enjoy the time with your family and friends. And thank you. Buenas noches. Thank you.
Well said. Well, how do I follow that? Other than to say that I am also thankful for each of you, for my community. I don't know, I don't say it often enough, but I'm, I'm religious. I'm a baptized Catholic, gone into Trinitarian view, very spiritual, God-fearing. And the God I serve has placed me and these people here in this community to serve you. And I'm grateful and thankful for that. We're, as Vice President Montez said, we're not, we have not arrived. We've got a long way to go. But I can say this board has, we've reached a steady pace. And it's a, a comfortable pace, and yet, it's kind of like if, if anything stops suddenly, we'll fall on our face because we're all having that kind of momentum. I like where we're at. I see all our people, all our students. They're almost where I'd like them to be. I, I hold a very forward-thinking vision, as most of you know. So I want to see Mr. Montez's kids part of my grandkids through Rialto. Rialto Unified, as all of your kids are, all of the staff family. I, I am grateful for each of you, for the work you do, for the, the work you'd like to do, for your visions. It's meaningful to me. It makes all of this worthwhile. I thank the community for voting in Mr. Montez and Ms. Walker. Because again, if we stumbled in an election, we would have fallen back or fallen on our face temporarily. Thank you to the community for, as Ms. Walker says, first for voting, however you voted, but mostly for voting for education, in, in my estimation. These two are some of the finest board members we, we could have. Some of the, this is the finest board I've served on. And I'd like to keep them around a while. Okay. One of the other things that I'm thankful for are students. The DSAC students have won an award, and they are going up to San Francisco to receive the Golden Bell Award. I asked Saeta Joffrey who the students were, and she said the, the students that were middle school students that are now in high school, who remain on DSAC, there's 11 of them. They're going up. For some of them, this is their, their first airplane ride. And for our student board member who shared with me, it will be her first airplane ride. These are the kind of things I enjoy doing for our community. They, they've earned it, they've, they've worked hard for it. They, they make a difference in my life as they make a difference in your life. Okay, let's see, where are we here? One of the things I've heard recently, I'll touch on a few things here. Every student, thanks to our lunch ladies, gets free breakfast and lunch.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
How, how can I not be thankful for that? So, you know, they, they can buy over and above, is what I'm gathering, but always, you've got to go in and, and just ask them. I mean, how do you sign up for free lunch? Ask one of the ladies or guys. Reading, I'm, I'm on Twitter almost all the time. Every free, free moment, I pop out the phone like a lot of people and I, I check what's going on. Some of the comments from other school board members and California school boards is that education, not only Rialto but everywhere, uses educational jargon, LCAP, PD. Okay, so that doesn't mean a whole lot unless you know what that means. So I'm going to ask all my staff family to, to venture and remember to bless our, our community by telling them what that is. We're not going to get there alone. We have our parents in the, the PLI. We're starting with parents, then with, with students, and we're all going to get there as a community. We need each other, so we need to be able to communicate with each other. Back onto STEM, always STEM. There are 2 million jobs available and for the foreseeable future, I believe the, the year was 2024, and there are only 1 million STEM workers trained and ready for them. That's why I push for STEM all the time. I, I saw online, on Twitter, esports, and I go, why do I want kids playing games, at school no less? Then I looked into it. It's big business. There's a lot of competitions. There's a lot of money being involved. There's scouting for UCLA, Berkeley, Cal Poly. UCI has one of the bigger programs, and that's pretty close. They can be home, you know, every weekend, hand you their laundry. I remember my son coming home, handing me the laundry. It is, it is one of those things. I look at all our kids, they're my kids too. They're our kids. Fire information. I have a website, k6riA.net. RI-A is for Rialto. k6riA.net. It's for the Rialto Amateur Radio Club. And there's all kinds of fire information. There's fire feeds, there's scanner feeds, there's Department of Transportation roadmaps to know whether you can get from point A to point B, or whether it's blocked because of, or rerouted, detoured. That's all on there, k6riA.net. And finally, I, I don't have a, a quote from anybody famous, but anybody who remembers Ziggy knows that Thanksgiving is when the turkeys get ripe. So. Okay, one of my favorites from back in high school. Okay, back onto the agenda. Public hearing. Williams Settlement Legislation Quarterly Uniform Complaint Report. The summary covering April through June is in reference D 1.1, and there are zero items to report. Another thing to be thankful for.
Move to open public hearing?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And any person wishing to speak on the item on public hearing will be granted three minutes. Do we have anybody? Dr. McDuffie?
No, we don't.
Okay. Public hearing pursuant to the requirements of government code and board policy, the form for public disclosure of proposed collective bargaining agreement, AB 1200, statutes of 19... Well, okay. Hold on here. We didn't close the public hearing. I didn't see anything on here. So let's make it right, and let's go back and vote to close the public hearing.
Aren't you going to read the public hearing?
Well, okay. And here I got confused. I thought it was part of the uniform complaint. You're right. You are right. Okay, never mind. Public hearing pursuant to the requirements of government code and board policy, the form of public disclosure of proposed collective bargaining agreement, AB 1200, statutes of 1991, Chapter 1213, as revised by AB 2756, statutes of 2004, Chapter 25, Government Code 3547.5, between the California School Employees Association, CSEA, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education, is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice, commonly called sunshining. Okay, questions or comments from the board? Okay.
To close public hearing?
We didn't have any comments. Dr. McDuffie said no, so.
We, we.
Need a second.
We need a vote to open it. We made a motion in a second. You read it.
Oh, that's right.
We need a vote to open it, and then.
Thank you. Okay, vote to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, time is 9:09. After all the reading and everything before.
And if there's no discussion or anybody has any comments from the public.
Would anybody like to comment on the CSEA contract?
I make a motion to close public hearing?
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you. Vote to close public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
And that time is 9:10. Thank you for setting me straight. Okay, consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. And we are making a motion and a second.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, and these are for reference items E through J. Okay, do we have any polls or any discussion?
No.
I, I do.
Please, go ahead. You have the floor. H10?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve all items E through J, except for H10. We can vote on that separately.
Okay, why don't we handle that, and then we can vote on it all at one time?
No problem. Okay, so item H10, H10 is to approve the use of an online electronic payment system, our bidder.
Arbiter pay.
Arbiter pay for high school sports officials in addition to the three clearing bank accounts to the custody of the district with the Bank of Utah required for the use of arbiter pay effective January 1st, 2019, at a pressing fee, processing fee that ranges from $1.60 to $1.95 per official, per day, that you pay for from the associate body, student body ASB account at no cost of the general fund. And my question is, the $1.60 to $1.95 per official, per day, what does that amount to per year?
Dr. McDuffie, could you direct staff, please?
Yes, I'm going to have Mohammed Islam to answer that. Thank you, Dr. McDuffie. It, it depends how many transactions we'll have throughout the year. As you like, you like using ATM machine, and there's a fee for every time you, you use the machine, if that is a fee, then every time you use the card, there's a fee. So in this case, we say roughly it could be somewhere $400 to $500 annual for the whole year, or it could be less.
Per, per school?
Per school. Again, this, this.
Per high school.
Per high school. It's only for high school right now. The reason, can I share why we bring this item to the board? We're trying to improve our system and process, how we pay our people. Today, we live in the technology world, you know, we cannot continue business like in how we do, writing checks, mailing checks. We have done business like that. So times change, and we tend to improve and, and try to compete other business world. You know, if we're, you know, one of the, we hire you to, for the season, for, you know, referee, or, you know, for the game, we have an obligation to pay you on time. The system we have, after you finish your assignment, we collect the information, then we go to the process. It takes sometimes two weeks to month. Depends on how fast we, our ASB, student body approve the payment, and then you manually cutting checks. Then checks you mail to your address where you provide us information. That's, I call, old schools, and how we have done business. So as a result, we're not getting good people to work, come work for us for, for this, for this purpose. We are not getting a good, those are really, because our payment system is very slow, how we paying our, you know. So that's officials, yeah. So that's kind of why we explored this idea, and we know many school districts are currently using the systems. They're reliable, and there, there's no risk. Myself and my director, Diane Romo, we explore and get into more in-depth to understand how system works. There's a check and balance. Anytime you change, make, bring a change, make some people uncomfortable. So we have to go over that uncomfortable time and open the door for, give a try, and monitor how effectively this system works for us, and improve our, our, our business system and processes, doing business to other peoples.
Okay, we have two questions. Ms. O'Kelly, you're first, then you, Mr. Montez.
My question is, although I think it's a great idea, because I used to have to deal with those paychecks and ASB and getting all that straight, and it was not fun, but is this something the high schools want?
That's correct.
You have talked with all the high school.
The requests.
ASB people, and they agree?
Our, most of the requests came from athletic director.
Okay.
They're the one facing challenge. They're the one brought this proposal to us. So we explored this, make sure we're not the only one, when you try these systems, how reliable and dependable. And we checked other school districts currently operating this for some times. So that encourages us to bring these systems to implement.
All right. My, my concern with this item is that the board is being asked to basically dictate to the student body, the ASB of each high school, how to use their funds since.
No, it comes out of ASB anyway.
Yeah, exactly. So we're asking, we're, we're, we're obligating, we would be obligating ASB to pay for a service that they're already doing. They're already doing it. Each high school has an ASB director, and that ASB director is in charge of, or is responsible for paying, making the payments that are approved by the expenditures, that are approved by the ASB council. Just like we approve, they, they themselves have meetings, they have a budget, they approve. The difference is, they fundraise the money themselves. So every single dollar that ASB fundraises, whether it's a bake sale, whether it's a t-shirt drive, car wash, whatever the ASB, however the ASB raises their funds, their, each individual ASB, those hard-earned dollars, they decide how to spend it. For us as a board to dictate to them, you're going to start having to pay a third-party company $500 to $600 a year to take care of cutting those checks for those officials, which is my understanding, which is my understanding, they're already getting paid between, on average, between seven to nine days after they officiate. Seven to nine days after you officiate a game, or whatever event it may be, doesn't seem unreasonable to me to get paid. But most companies get paid net 30, net 40, you know, whatever it is. Seven to nine days sounds very. net 40, you know, whatever it is. Seven to nine days sounds very reasonable, you know, to get paid for an event or a game that you officiated. And I just think it's unfair for us to obligate the ASBs to pay out of their account, their own hard-earned money that they raised, how they're going to pay, start paying their officials. I think it'd be fair for us to give the ASB the option. If we want to change how they pay their, how they use their funds and how they pay the officials that they have to pay for, why don't we ask them, would you like to, since you're going to be paying it out of your own hard-earned fundraising money, would you like to go with this option? It might make things better for you. It might streamline things easier and rather than dictating to them to do it first.
President.
Which one of you were first?
I didn't even know this.
Let's go this way first. Mr. Ayala.
First of all, I had...
Mr. Ayala first and then to you, Ms. O'Kelly. Go ahead.
I'll make it quick. I'll make it quick. Historically, there's probably no question that some of our ASBs have gotten themselves in predicaments through the accounting process. If, and I like the idea of always giving people the options. But, if this procedure streamlines, makes things more efficient, so there's less headache, less confusion, by all means, because you know that what's happened in the past with ASBs. So, if that helps them, by all means. But, again, if they opt out to save $500, because that's what it sounds like it's going to cost each school, if there's any way that we can justify assisting with that expenditure, it would not be unreasonable for us to assist if it's feasible. So, just a comment.
Ms. O'Kelly.
First of all, ASB does not make money off bake sales. ASB makes money off sports, which is why they are responsible for the cost of the officials. And they make thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. So, if this added up to $400 a year, that's a drop in the bucket, really. And I know, because I had to handle complaints and we didn't get a lot of the best referees because they said you take too long to pay us. So, I agree with Mohammed. This is going to expedite the whole process and I, for one, know the schools will appreciate it.
Just...
So...
Which one of you? Ladies first.
Okay. And my, just input or question is, we talked about utilizing a third party and there no being, not being any cost to the general fund. There's going to be a cost to open, because it says you've got to open up another bank account. So, that already is another cost because are there fees associated with that? And then back to the issue of who's, who is it making it easy for? Is it just because, are the athletic directors really wanting that? Or is it just us at the higher level saying, "We want to streamline this" and then still laying the costs and taking it over, I mean, the cost being laid on the ASB?
Well, the... Hold on, hold on one second, Mohammed, before he goes there, before I lose my thought. That's why I want to interject.
Get on.
First of all, in regards to the process, that the athletic directors were involved in this process, and I know that Kelly Bruce has been meeting with them on a regular basis in regards to getting their input and so forth with what's going on with athletics. Second, to Nancy O'Kelly's point in regards to the competitiveness of our referees and those that we get in regards to the efficiency of the process, whether it's nine days or 10 days, in regards to, it's similar to substitutes in pay. If we have a competing district who's paying more, then you're going to have those substitutes leaning towards there and we're going to get the, not the, maybe the quality that we would have if we paid. And so, those are some of the things and factors that were taking place. But, to answer your question in regards to the pay, I'm going to hand it over to Mohammed to answer.
Thank you. The bottom line, yes, why we bring that aside and board your approval, there's nothing changed in terms of ASB, student body approval of the expenditures. As Mr. Montes referring to, we're not asking board to override their process. It's simply your approval to establish an account and this is online process. Your approval authorized us to give, you know, to establish the account. The fund will be coming from ASB account. They have a fund. Right now, they're doing manual checks, request signatures. Then you need to, you think about man-hours to produce every season after the end of the game, make sure the staff is available, make sure the checks are getting processed, make sure you get checks all signed, make sure you get mailed. So, you think about adding all these steps, you know? It takes time.
And Mr. Ayala is right. One of our schools, one of our schools has had issues in the past regarding ASB, one of the high schools, anyway, has had issues in the past regarding ASB funds, or should I say, their books not being very accurate. But, we, I was contacted by one of the ASB directors from one of the high schools who has never had an issue with ASB funds, who does an awesome job. And she's the one that explained to me this agenda item and said that her and her students from their ASB at their high school felt that it would be unfair for us to approve this item and take away those $500 or $600 a year, money they fundraise, whether it's sports, whatever they have to sell, whatever they fundraise, $500 to $600 a year out of ASB funds is a lot of money to them. And they're already doing, they're already paying officials within seven to nine days.
Sure.
And they don't mind doing the work and they just don't see the need for a third-party to profit. And I would just venture to say that we check with them. I could at least vouch, and I believe all of the board got the email, I could at least vouch for at least one of our high schools whose ASB is asking us to reconsider this agenda item. Maybe we can give them all an option since it's only three high schools that really are, it's four high schools, but three that would really be impacted by this. And then we bring it back.
Yeah. Table it and reword it.
Before we table it, I'd like to make a simple amendment. I think this would probably be appropriate. One, I like the idea that I don't want to spend ASB money. But, on the other hand, I do want the security of taking the load off and responsibility off ASB. And if there's any books that are, have any discrepancies, the audit is going to cost us more than $500 per high school. So, I'm just suggesting, from the last line, I'm sorry, the second to the last line where it reads, "To be paid from the general fund, no more than $500 per high school." Simple amendment is what I'm proposing to the board.
That's reasonable, too. If it's legal.
Is there a time crunch on this?
Mr. Martinez, may I, Diane Romo, her previous life, she used to be auditor, so may I highlight some of the things. Diane, would you please help us on this? And she worked hard on this to bring this item to the board.
It was a young previous life.
And President Martinez, after she speaks and we still have some questions about this, we can certainly look at the time period and bring this item back after we look at it further. So...
I was curious if there's a time crunch that we have to...
Let's not start until January 2019.
Okay. So, there is none?
Good evening. So, there is a time constraint because if we do go on to this system, it ties into the IRS reporting for those officials. So, ideally, we would want to start using it in January. The request to use this system came from the actual athletic directors. The system's integrated with the scheduling system used by CIF. And so, like Dr. McDuffie mentioned earlier, the request is to have this integrated system that pays the next day so that we do get the best officials at our games. If we are concerned about having ASB pay for it, then we could always pay for it out of the general fund. Considering the benefit we would receive from having that pool of officials that would be willing to work with us, I think it would be a good investment.
So, we can...
Okay. Under that guise, I remove, withdraw my amendment. Let's make it even simpler. We pass it as is, but I would like to see something saying that the general fund will reimburse ASB on the next agenda, please.
We'll do that.
Okay. We good?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We can move forward. Saving our kids, giving them the best we can. Okay. We are ready to vote on E through J unless there are any more polls or questions or comments. Okay. Vote by board members for E through J.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Discussion items. K1, motion and a second, please.
So, moved?
Second.
Thank you. K1 is to adopt resolution number 181918, accepting amendment number 01 with the California Department of Education, which increases the maximum reimbursable amount, MRA, for child development contract number CSPP 842801 by $190,231 with no change in the minimum days of operation, MDO, requirement of 176 days. All terms and conditions of the original agreement shall remain unchanged and in full force and effect, and authorizes Mohammed Z. Islam, Associate Superintendent Business Services, as the signer of said agreement.
Point of order.
Please, go ahead.
I just want to make sure we didn't commit a mistake.
Okay.
On item H10, did we approve it as it's written or did we approve it with an amendment?
We approved it as is written. I withdrew the amendment and they are going, we approved it with stipulation that the next board meeting will have something saying that the general fund will be reimbursing ASB.
Okay. So, just to make sure we do this correctly, do we need to make a motion to amend it?
It's not amended. I withdrew the amendment.
It's approved like this and then on the next agenda, there'll be an item saying that the general fund will reimburse ASB for the Arbiter Pay.
But, we could, up to $500 each high school.
Okay.
May I make it just simple for the board if you don't mind?
Certainly.
We could just simply take the last sentence, that all costs related to this account will be paid from general fund.
But, should we approve it that way?
Yes, please.
That's what it...
In that way, you don't have to come back as an item again. Now, tonight, I know board, he wants to approve this. So, with that correction, said all costs associated to establish this account will be paid by the general fund.
It's already been approved.
It's not just to establish the account, it's the daily charge.
Yeah, the fees. We're talking fees, yes. The service fee.
It'll be between $14,000 and $20,000 a year total for all the schools. But, elementary is not going to be using it. It's mainly the high school.
No, no, no. It would only be about $1,500. If it's $500 per high school, $1,500.
I was thinking, we've got 28 schools.
No, 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 no.
No, it's only high schools.
It's only the days they have games that require a referee.
The maximum will be...
Yeah, it's about $500 a year cost to each high school. So, it'd be about $1,500. But, if you have 28 schools, that'd be $14,000. But, the elementary aren't affected. Neither are the junior high, maybe.
There's only three schools affected.
So, it's really insignificant.
Yeah. What is the wishes of the board? To bring this back and amend it?
No, time sensitive here.
I think we should just approve it tonight, like Mr....
It has already been approved.
With the stipulation?
Without.
No.
As is, as written.
He withdrew his amendment.
As written. It's approved already.
Okay.
And next time, they will bring, they will bring something saying that we will reimburse ASB up to $500 per high school. It's good. It's clean. They can...
Is that easier to do?
It's at the board's pleasure, which...
Well, we've already approved it. We can't unapprove it.
Yeah, we can bring it back.
It's already approved. Is it the board's wishes to go back or it's already approved?
Just to let you know, it's already been approved for this board meeting. It will have to come back as a new item to change it at this point, since we voted on it.
So, if we...
That's easier for the board.
If we approved it this way, then just like we said, put something in the next agenda.
Yeah, that's two. Do I hear a third?
And the reason we're doing that is so that we can, time sensitive, we can be ready for January.
Right.
Yes.
So, we can bring it at the December 7th board meeting, December 7.
And that would only be to, this is already going through. They can act on it.
Right.
So, it's just a matter of bringing us something saying that the general fund will reimburse ASB.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Let us continue.
Okay. We read number one, but I think we have to vote on it.
Yes. Okay. We have a motion and a second on K1. Questions or comments? Vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye. K, motion and second on K2, please.
So, moved?
Second.
Thank you. K2 is to ratify the tentative settlement agreement between the Royal to Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, CSEA. And that is K2.1 through 10. Questions or comments by board members? Seeing none? Vote by board.
You know what? I'm going to say something.
Please do.
I want to say something. Oh, boy. Because it's important and it's been bothering me for a long time. When we have organizations that want to, if what, within an organization and you have different unions or different groups, they're falling apart with benefits or wages and you want to catch up, how can you do that? That's my question. If you have a me-too clause, mathematically, it just doesn't work. Yes, everybody gets a raise, but the people at the top get a bigger percentage than the people at the bottom. So, if you want to bring the people at the bottom up, you have to word it differently than a me-too. So, that's all I'm going to say about that. And it would be, it would be, I think, some, it would be worth the time to discuss with changing words to help people who are at the bottom come up by rewording some of these, these words like me-too. Okay? Just wanted to make comment.
And to make it even more clear, this board has discussed this for about nine years. And we all feel the same. We'd like to close that gap. So, okay. We have basically their agreement that they've already voted on in front of us. So, other questions or comments? Okay. Vote by board members.
Aye.
K3, motion and a second, please.
Moved to rename the West Wing, Max and Pauline Tidler West Wing.
Correct. Questions or comments? Okay.
Did you, did you get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, discussion.
Okay. Approve renaming the West Wing at Dr. John Arcas Lunes Education Center here at the district office to the Max and Pauline Tidler West Wing. Comments, questions?
I had a couple of questions.
Please, go ahead.
Just on naming. Do we have a naming policy for our facilities in the district?
Yes. It has been looked at and gone over about two or three times by Avila, myself and other staff. Do you have any particulars for us?
No, I don't have any particulars, but I do know that we do have a policy on it.
And this is within those.
Okay. So, was this publicly, is there a public notification about naming opportunities? And was that followed and is that in the policy?
There is, but there is also... There is, but there is also recommendations that the board can adhere to. I can't remember exactly what it is, but basically, it says that we are within the proper grounds. A room is different than a school.
We can always, we can always look at that, take a look at the current board policy for naming or renaming buildings and, you know, sites. But I think this is very well deserving.
Oh, yes.
Whoever, you know, whoever was in charge of taking a look at the consideration for the renaming of the West Wing, I think this is very well deserving of these individuals who've given so much for so long for themselves to this district, to the students, children of this district, to the people. But going forward, I would also be interested in taking a look at, you know, what we can do to better the process and be more inclusive of people in the community to participate. I'm sure there's people in the community, parents and others outside of the district that would also, you know, like to be included in the process.
I think it would be good to allow people to submit nominations and write their reasons why they feel this person deserves this honor. And then they can be reviewed by a committee.
In the past, I believe when this, when the district office was renamed, I believe they went about it a different way. But, you know, my only concern would be if we have a current board, bylaw or board policy for doing this, make sure that we're following it, and then we could always take a look at it and see how we can improve it.
Okay. First, can we have the board policy sent to the board? Just email is fine.
Yes.
And would you like, is it the pleasure of the board to move forward or to pull and hold these next two items then?
So I'm going to, I'm going to request that we at least, we can hold them, table them, or bring them back until we get that information, just so that everybody is aware of what the policies on naming specifically, especially if something, if we're ratifying at the board, there should be a public opportunity for people to weigh in, or at least know the, know the way that they're doing it, and then weigh in on whoever's names right.
Okay, we have a motion for tabling. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. It doesn't necessarily mean we won't approve these. There's nothing wrong with taking a look at. You know, it's one thing, it's one thing to, if we're going to vote on something, make sure that we understood, we understood exactly how it came to be, rather than, you know, just hear, you know.
No problem, and being safe.
Right, and that's it. I have no, this is not against Mr. Max and Ms. Pauline at all. This is just about process and transparency on this process. And so, just so that we make sure that the public knows how the process comes about. So at any other time, as we have new facilities or wings or whatever, people are aware of the process and doing it and being able to participate.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table. Did you have a comment, Ms. O'Kelly?
Well, my concern is we have two of these tonight, number three and four, and have those people already been notified that they're getting, going to receive this honor?
I certainly hope they haven't.
Right.
Okay.
Saeda Joffrey from Communications, there's different ways for naming. At the end of the day, the board's 3-2 vote is what ends up naming any school facility. Usually, for schools, we do have a community process where we have an application that's filled out. Community members are allowed to fill out that application. It has to be reviewed from our office, submitted to the Board of Education. That is for a facility of a new, a school name sake. In the past, we've also had board members vote for their own school name sake. So there's various things that board members do, and we have to respect that. The only difference is when we are naming, in this case, a cafeteria for a particular person, it is something that was unanimously voted on at the schools and told to, excuse me, Dr. Monty Stewart, the principal of that school. She had served 30 years at that school. So I think there's a notion, not that the board will absolutely okay it, but I think Dr. Stewart is here on behalf of the family and also the staff members, of which over 95%, because they have contacted me, really, really want this to happen. I know that there was a Rutmeier, Mrs. Rutmeier at Rialto Middle. I know there's Marty Sives. There's so many different beloved employees that have given two decades, three decades of their life to the schools and the children. So I think in that situation, it's different. I think a facility, aside from a school site, may have different, I guess, criterias, for lack of a better word. This is something that Dr. Stewart is here for as well, on behalf of, he did not want to ask the entire Hugh Banks Elementary School to come here this, tonight, but he has informed them that it is on the agenda. It was for consideration. He also wrote a letter requesting that as well. And I'm in no way saying those are two different things. Both are worthy, and they're both deserving. But one, the school votes for, for a school site where a person served for over 30 years, and another one is a community member, and it's for an off-school site, a support site. Not that I'm taking away one from the other. One is actually an employee of the Rialto Unified School District. And so, if, with our superintendent's assistance, I would be more than happy to assist the Board of Education in that procedure, in that, the procedure, and looking at the board policy. We've named Werner, Carter, many schools, Kodiak. So we've gone through the proper procedures on that. But at the end of the day, it is the Board of Education's power and, you know, one vote that guarantees that school name sake, or the facility name sake, or in this case, a area name sake. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
So on this, so for Hugh Banks, that was the process that was followed. What was the process that was followed this time for the West Wing?
For the West Wing, we had some community members mention it as well, and I believe it went to the board president, and the discussion was from the board president with the superintendent. And I'm not sure if I received a formal letter. However, we do have time. It's nothing that's urgent, and so we could look into signatures, we can look into the board policy, as President Martinez mentioned, and make sure that we do everything kosher on that end as well. But again, many things have happened in the Rialto Unified School District. We've had sitting board members who are deciding board factors for the vote. We've had some that have just decided to go ahead in a meeting and name, so it's kind of a free-for-all. But there is a board policy, and we would like to follow that policy if we can, and if it's allowed. And I appreciate President Martinez and the board looking through the policy for the West Wing's name sake, which is actually a little different than a school site, because Ms. Dr. Stewart is following the guidelines. He just has not done the cheerleading and the fanfare because out of respect for the Board of Education, because he just felt that this is something that if you had asked him to come up, he would, he would do so.
Okay, we have a motion. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to table K3.
No, I was just going to say, that's all I'm asking. It's for the policy. I mean, for the policy and the transparency of the process of naming.
Okay.
That's it. So I would, I don't want us to have a naming process, that process that is a free-for-all.
I agree.
So that if we have a policy, let's just follow it, that's it.
And what I've heard back is we are, but that's why we have a motion and a second. You have a comment?
I want to approve these. But it doesn't sound like we follow the board policy.
Right.
I'm okay either way. I'm just asking, what is the pleasure of the board?
I think maybe this time, approve them and get the policy and be on top of it if anything else comes up.
I think, I think, yeah, I think in good faith, it would be good for us to approve these tonight, and moving forward, we just make sure with an absolute, no, absolute, no doubts, that we are indeed following our own protocol and board policy. If we are, if it turns out that somebody challenges this, then we'll deal with it then. I don't think anybody would. But because people have been told that this was on the agenda, because people have been told that this is going to happen, you know, I'd hate, I'd hate for them to receive the news that, you know, the board didn't want to approve it. But now that I got some more information of how the process came about, you know, I got a better understanding, but I would like, moving forward, I would like to make sure that we are following the process and we can say, hey, you know what, you guys just did it because, you know.
Okay, for clarity, we have a motion and a second to table it. If we vote to table it, we are tabling K3. We can move on with K4. Or we can not table it by just voting abstain or no, and then we would then continue on in the naming process for K3. So however you vote, would be the answer. We are a board of five, so for the public's understanding, we have to have three votes one way or the other.
One, one last comment. Just to say that if this is not, and I'm talking to my fellow board members, if this is not a pressing issue on number three, that it has to be done today, that we actually do our own due diligence to make sure that we have followed the process. That is what we, that's, that's my advice. That's my input.
It's wisdom, yes. That's fine.
So there's a first and a second.
Okay.
Take a vote to the next, next board meeting, December 7th.
Okay, we are going to vote to either table it with an aye, or we will continue on with an nay. And this is to table K3. Vote by board members.
Aye.
Okay, and I am going to abstain. So we have tabling K3. We are on item K4. A motion and a second, please.
Moved to approve K4.
And we have a second. With a motion, we will move forward and vote yea or nay. Without a second, it would automatically be tabled to follow suit. So I'm looking for a second. Hearing none, both, both items then would be brought back. And if.
But wait a minute, this was a school site decision.
Is it?
It falls under the same board policy.
Is it within the board policy of naming it? That's what, that's what Dean is saying. We want to make sure, absolutely. Not that we don't want to name it, we just, the question was, did the board, did the district follow the exact board policy on this item? Do we want to look it up now, or do we want to bring it back and make sure for December 7th?
We.
It sets precedence for the future.
That's true.
There will be other important decisions to be.
Hi, Monty.
Actually, no, you can't. Because we've got, we're in the middle of a motion and a second. It will either move forward or die, one of the two, be tabled, so to speak.
It'll just be tabled.
Yeah.
We'll get up, we'll look at the policy.
Okay, without a second, I do request that both of these be brought back, but for tomorrow, the board policy gets sent out, and any specifics on the board policy be notated.
Absolutely.
Okay. Not hearing a second on K4, that will be brought back as well. Okay, on K5, motion and a second, please.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. K5 is to approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel, stipulated expulsions, case numbers 181915 and 181912. Questions or comments? Vote by board members.
Aye.
And I'll go down as abstain.
On?
On five.
On five.
Okay, Mr. Ayala has abstained on K5. Okay, so we have four ayes and one abstain. Okay, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on Friday. That's Friday, Friday, December 7th.
Not Wednesday?
Nope, not Wednesday. What day?
Friday.
Yeah, Friday, that's right. December 7th at 7:00 PM right here, the Dr. John Arcas Lunes Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the board meeting are available upon request from the superintendent's office. And the reason we had to move it till December 7th is board members had to be sworn in by the first Friday of December. So that was that. That has all, or will all change January 1st. It will then be the second Friday of December. Okay, vote, motion and a second for adjournment.
Moved to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. And vote by board members for adjournment.
Aye.
Time is 9:54.